It's the appointed hour. We have a quorum present, and therefore I would like to call to order this meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Obviously, for me, this is number last of over a thousand meetings, and kind of an emotional deal for me. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the fathers of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. You may be seated. This meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws, a copy of which is on the back wall. We will start by convening as the Board of Equalization. Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Could you please have the roll call?
That's Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent at the moment, Commissioner Kraft is absent at the moment, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Kavanaugh has just joined us. I know Commissioner Morgan is on the Zoom. Commissioner Rogers and Mr. Chair.
Present. Yes, I can see both Commissioners Kraft and Morgan joining us virtually at the moment. Thank you. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting, December 8th. Item B, call for a meeting on January 12th as the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections. What is... Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgeson. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Yes, I can.
Commissioner Kraft and Commissioner Morgan, how do you vote?
We don't have any audio for some reason.
PJ, are you still on your phone?
Well, I'll just, if Mr. Chair, if you're okay, I can just close the vote now unless you want to wait for them to...
We got enough to pass.
Yeah, yeah.
We're good.
Motion passes five to zero.
Very good. Thank you. Citizens' comments. Would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization on any item not on the agenda? Okay, we have resolution approving application for tax exemptions, Form 457 on motor vehicles, recommended for approval by the county treasurer. What is the pleasure of the board? And adjourned? Do we... Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgeson to approve Resolution D and adjourn. Could we please vote?
Just gonna do it like I did last time. Motion passes five to zero unless Commissioner Kraft or Morgan can get through. Okay, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We will now convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kraft is present via Zoom, Commissioner Morgan is present via Zoom, Commissioner Rogers and Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. Minutes and claims, item A, approval of minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting held December 8th, and item B, approval of claims for payment through today, December 15th. And we could take item C as well, approval of a resolution authorizing the clerk comptroller to make certain payments while the board is adjourned. What is the pleasure of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgeson to approve items 1, A, B, and C. Questions or comments to any of these items? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We do have consent agenda next. There are two items on consent agenda I'm going to want to pull out myself. The first having to do with the CARES Act, and we'll take that item separately because we're going to have some discussion about the CARES Act while we are doing that. And then there's one item in here. Is it Loco, Nebraska? Is that the name of... wasn't that on... I thought that was on consent. No, I don't see it.
It's item K, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. I am going to ask that that one be held over until later in the meeting.
So it's, sorry, items A and K?
A and K I would like held out for the moment. Is there any other items on consent agenda that anybody would like addressed individually? If not, what is the pleasure of the board?
Excuse me just a moment. Are you telling me what the resolution is for and five...
On item A, the CARES Act?
On the consent agenda?
But you're talking about under item A, the CARES Act stuff?
Yes.
That's what we're going to come back to, because I want to have more discussion on it. That's why we're not including it in consent.
Okay.
So item A, we will come back to, to address separately.
Item A totally?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, I get it now.
Further questions or comments? Then what is the pleasure of the board? Okay, motion to approve consent agenda less items A and K by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers. Questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle?
And these other, other items?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, item K?
We're holding it over. We're not...
I'm sorry. I'm misunderstanding all that. I'm trying to read all this. There's no backup for this. So you're gonna do, you're holding over A through all of A?
A and A and K.
And K?
Correct.
Just those two?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other CARES Act money in any of those others?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay. Further questions or comments to the motion? All right, then I would call for the vote, please. This is for the consent agenda less items A and K.
I just wanted to be real dense on your last meeting. Nothing changes.
Motion passes five to zero.
At this point, let's go back to item A and start into some of our CARES Act discussion. Where is... where's Joe? There he is. I would invite our fiscal administrator, Joe Lorenz, to come forward. We have five items for consideration this morning on the agenda, and then I intend to have some discussion as well.
Okay, well, we're handing out, the handout of the summary of allocations of the CARES Act funding. On the consent agenda, item A is just the approval of...
Excuse me. Can you unmute your screen?
I can't, but she can.
We're good?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. So item A off the consent agenda is approval of five of the agreements that have been prepared by the county's attorney's office for dispersments primarily of the groups that we consider local government. So there's, you know, Valley Suburban Fire, Village of Waterloo, Village of Boys Town, and then agreements with the Public Building Commission and DOT COM. And all these amounts have been previously approved by the board, and this is just balling together the legal agreements and statement of work, which we require to be approved and signed before the funds can be dispersed.
Thank you.
So I take any questions on that.
Any questions as to these five items? I intend to have more CARES Act discussion in a moment. I think we could probably go ahead and consider action on these five items if the board was comfortable so doing, but that will not end our CARES Act discussion. We have more things to talk about. Commissioner Boyle?
I want to ask about the proposed $10 million for the building across the street.
That's not here. I'd like to stay focused on what's on the agenda, and we'll get to that.
Okay. Well, I wasn't sure if it was embedded in number four.
No.
No, it's not, Mike.
Okay. I just wanted to know that. So you'll signal me when that's up, right?
Yes, I will.
Good. Thanks. I'll rely on that.
Okay. All right. Further questions or comments to these? Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve items 1 through 5 under A, the CARES Act. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Joe, on this front page that you just passed out to us as of 12/15/2020, it begins with 166 million CARES Act allocation, but it doesn't give us any total at the end of unexpended CARES Act. So what's that number?
If you look at the total package that I handed out in the, go to the very last page of the handout, and then you'll see the total of after item 35 is 155,470,000. So that is the amount that has, the board has voted to specifically allocate, which means there would be basically about 10 million left at this point that we haven't allocated. And the plan on that would be to sweep that into the general fund reserve via the presumptive salary method for public health and public safety salaries, and we do that in January, once we get the final numbers through December 30th.
Okay. So if you go back to the first page, where the top of the page is CARES Act allocations by sector, total 166 million.
Yes.
Okay. And you work through the first page to the bottom. What's the balance? Are you saying the balance is contained on the last page, and that's 155,470,215 dollars?
Well, you can see the balance here is if you add the, excuse me, the 2.3, the 4.2, and the 2.4. So that's 6.5 plus 2.5. So that's like 9 million there, and that doesn't, so that would be what's left. And then there is certain amounts that have been allocated but not spent. But in rough ballpark, it's about 10 million dollars.
10 million dollars on page one.
And also on the last page, because it's 166 million versus 156 million, so that's the 10 million.
Right. So just to be clear, 166 million comes in from the CARES Act. 10 million on the first page is not expended.
To date, yeah.
And another 10 million...
No, it's the same 10 million.
It's the same 10 million. So except for that 10 million, all of the CARES Act money has been expended?
Yes.
Okay. So if you go to, back to the first page, where you have in item 1, local government counties, preliminary allocation 75 million, allocated as of 12/15/2020, 72,655,969, for a balance of 2,344,031.
Right. And that 75 million represents money that was earmarked and allocated to Douglas County in its operations. And so what's that saying? At this point, we had earmarked a total of 75 million towards that, and as of today, there's 2.3 million of that 75 million that we haven't specifically identified toward any of the county operations.
So that will lapse to the general fund?
Yes.
And then local government others, preliminary allocation 40 million, allocated as of 12/15, 35,814,246, remaining balance 4,185,754.
So those are the 13 to 15 units of local government that we gave money to, and also the lion's share of 30 million to the city of Omaha. And we had set aside $10 million for the other units of local government, and we spent about 6 million, and that were in the process of dispersing to, you know, the smaller cities, fire departments, the universities, the Public Building Commission, and DOT COM.
Okay, I'm going to call time at this point and bring us back to the motion before us, which is these five items on the agenda. We have a motion for the approval.
Okay. I have some questions.
What's the purpose of this this morning? What is this?
The purpose of what? Of approving these five items?
Of his presentation. I'm not sure I get it.
Well, we have five items for consideration. That's the motion that's on the floor that we're supposed to be talking about right now. Once we get done with that, this being the final meeting of the year, I thought, Joe often gives us a CARES Act update of where we are, and I thought, for the last meeting of the year, doesn't it make sense to get a year-end summary? What do we do with our CARES Act? That's the next discussion I would like to have, once we act on the motion before us.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would just assume he completed, or else, actually, what I'm thinking, it'd be nice if he came back after the first of the year.
It's over after the first of the year. The CARES Act expires at the end of the year.
If you let me finish, I'd like to be able to read it. You can't read it. And there aren't any totals on the first page, and I think it's inappropriate. It just is, there's something going on here. So I mean, if there's something you have to say, you know, I don't think, I think Joe's the messenger for you. I'm not really sure, but let's, can't we at least, can't you have something prepared, Joe, that you can, we can read? Those people, people at home can't read that. People in the room can't read that. Can we do this at another time when we can read it?
No.
Well, I have additional questions.
Well, so do I.
I hope that they are too, the five items that are on the motion before us.
Yeah, I was halfway through.
And when you ran out of time. Okay, you may ask again, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Please start the timer.
So the 4,185,755 in the second of the five items lapses to the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. So the cities and local governmental entities that were awarded that do not get that money?
Well, we had earmarked a total of 10 million, and then we made 15 separate awards, and they, so they all are getting the money that they were awarded, but we just didn't use the total 10 million in what we awarded.
So that lapses the general fund? They don't get that?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. Then the agency community services, the third of the five, which has 14 million preliminary allocation for rent and utilities assistance, and it shows 14 million apparently expended with a remaining funding of zero.
And that's subject to what's left at the end of the year. You know, I got an update today from Dollar Energy that they've spent a little over 2.6 million, and they have a lot of applications in the pool.
I saw that as well. So what you're saying is, you're anticipating that they'll...
There might be a couple million dollars here, but I don't have that, I won't have that number till December 30th.
Okay, okay. But as of today, we know that there is remaining funding in those...
Yeah, we don't know the exact amount. It's approximately two, two and a half million is my guess, yeah.
Last I saw, the rent subsidy, which was, I think, allocated 10 million, had expended somewhere in the seven to eight million, which would leave a couple million there. The utilities, which had been allocated 4 million. It looked like, from the Dollar Energy report, that they had come close, but not quite to 4 million. Is that about...
Right. There might be a half a million left there, so maybe figure between the two and two and a half million.
Okay. So that balance would, at the end of the year, lapse to the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes. And then the nonprofits, 33 million allocated as of today, as of November 10th, 33 million allocated. So zero balance there.
Yeah, we talked with Omaha Community Foundation yesterday. We've allocated them 28 million. They're assuming all that will be spent. And then the other 5 million is to the zoo, and they're assuming all that will be spent. So we're not anticipating any money coming back there.
And then finally, reserve for future needs, 4 million, less Deloitte fees, 1.561750, over a million and a half to the consultants who were supposedly signing on for 300,000, and running. So that reserve for future needs has a balance of 2.4 million. That lapses to the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. That entire page one, which doesn't have a grand total, is 10 million?
Around 10 million, yes.
So the entire 166 million was expended, except for 10 million?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, when we did that resolution on November 24th, we said that any remaining funds at January 30th, I mean, sorry, at December 30th, will be swept into the general fund reserve. And so I'm anticipating that number to be approximately 10 million.
And that would be to defray personnel costs impacted by COVID in 2020?
Public health and public safety costs, yes.
Okay. And that 10 million is also going to be discussed later on as being earmarked for the kids jail across the street, same 10 million?
Well, you know, earlier, we allocated 26.4 million, so there would be 10 million on top of that. So we'd probably be somewhere around 35, 36 million in total. That would be transferred to the general fund, and then that amount is up for, to the county board to decide how to spend. But it would be in the general fund reserve.
Okay. So that's my confusion, Joe, because I thought there was 26 million earlier, but we're not seeing that on this page. We're seeing 10 million. It's actually 36 million unexpended.
Well, we did a formal resolution and a budget transfer of 26.4 million, and so that 26.4 million is included in the 72, because that was a formal resolution and transfer already.
Right. But that 26 has been swept into the general fund?
Yes.
And now an additional 10 will be swept into the general fund?
Yes.
So there's 36 million of unexpended CARES money swept into the general fund. That's all I'm trying to get at. Is that correct?
Yes, I agree.
Well, I'm going to call time on this, and to call the 26 million allocation to the county as unexpended is, it was expended. It was allocated to the county. I would like to bring us back to the motion at hand, the motion before us. Further comments or questions to the motion? I hope this is germane to the motion.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, Joe.
Louise?
Yeah.
You've had your 10 minutes, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
10 minutes for 166 million. Louise Humana, 3306 Birch Street. I'm also confused about the 10 million.
I'm hoping to clarify if people will let me get that far on the agenda.
Okay. Well, we've got two budgets that was presented by Joe. A summary budget here, the first, in the first page, and then an extensive budget. In the extensive budget, there's a balance of 10 million, 500,029. I got that from taking 166 million minus the total. And then on the summary budget, I did the same thing, and I got 8 million, 9 million. So the summary budget says there's 9 million available, and the detailed budget says there's close to 11 million dollars available. There's a difference?
The fees aren't in the...
The fees aren't in the detailed budget? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Further comments to the motion?
Larry Store, 501.5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. I too very confused on some of these issues, particularly spending money on HVAC out of, I guess, federal dollars somehow comes out of my pocket. But I would like to ask that when we're talking about important matters like this, that we understand what it is you're saying. So please remove the mask and speak into the microphone, not leaning back away from it, so we can understand the words, because words matter. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Further questions or comments before we vote? Then I would call for the vote on item A, please. Well, Mr. Chair, at the risk of spending, I would like to have some clarification on four and five. Well, we've already called for the vote, but...
Item A, we're voting on A, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Correct, correct.
When it says, "Resolution approved in some award agreement with the Omaha Department of Public Building Commission for the allocation of previously authorized CARES Act funds." What's that?
Well, for both DOT COM and the Public Building Commission, the county attorney's office recommended that we have an agreement with them. Because we've treated them, because they're not a direct department or office of the county, we, but yet, we're saying they were eligible for CARES Act reimbursements. We treated them a little separately in that when we're giving them money for reimbursement, we're actually, you know, instead of doing a budget transfer, we're cutting them a cash check. And so these are costs that we've vetted with Deloitte that are CARES Act eligible for like, things like PP&amp;E, and like when the building commission redid the conference rooms, or DOT COM helped people do telework. So these were eligible CARES Act expenses. So they tracked those, submitted them. We brought them previously to the board. They were approved, and so we, you know, are going to pay them on a reimbursement basis. But these are just two agreements that kind of memorialize exactly what's going on.
Well, the part about exactly what's going on doesn't include a dollar amount. I mean, I, it's kind of confusing if it says...
Well, because we're not asking you to approve any new money. This has all been previously approved.
We're approving a previously authorized expenditure?
Yes.
I don't understand why we're doing that.
I'll let the county attorney explain that, though.
What I really want to know, Joe, is what's the dollar? What's the money? Because there's no money on here.
Zero.
Well, that's what's left. What was given to them?
Teresa, here, I can help, if I may.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Teresa, York County Attorney's Office, can you hear me well enough? Okay. Commissioner, if I direct your attention to exhibit A, which is the SOW for item A4, the dollar amount is on that page.
I don't have anything like that. All I've got is what's on the agenda.
Right, this is on the agenda. This is item A4.
Okay, what's the dollar amount?
If you look at the exhibit A of A4, the dollar amount is in exhibit A.
Well, just a second, wait a minute.
Okay, sure.
Is this on the computer? Well, there's no, as usual, usually there is a, I know, I got all that, I think, from her. Thanks, Patrick.
And so this board has participated.
Before you go on, when there's an attachment, it has an area down here where I can click and brings it up. There's nothing here. So that's why there's nothing here. So I've got, I don't know, 17 pages to read. Can you just tell me the dollar amount?
Sure, for, I'm looking at A4, and the dollar amount is 3,943,501.11.
Okay, and where is that on the document?
If you go to exhibit A, which is the statement of work, or SOW, it's on page two.
Is this here?
Yes, it would be there.
I'm sorry, did you say page two?
Of the SOW.
Okay, it's page two, okay.
And so this board has participated in a two-step process when giving out CARES Act funds to local governments. You've done an allocation, and then the second step is the one you have before you today. So you've already allocated money to these, to DOT COM and to the Public Building Commission and these fire departments. And this is that second step, where they enter into an agreement with us, where they essentially promise to abide by the CARES Act. And that agreement is a template that our office worked with Deloitte on creating. The nuts and bolts of the program itself are in the statement of work. That way, we could change the template as little as possible each time, and we could put the program that you were attempting to do for the public or for the community is in that statement of work. And that's why the dollar figure is in the statement of work. It changes every time. And so I would direct your attention to exhibit A, statement of work.
Okay, so this 3.9 million was, has already been given to the county attorney's office and been spent?
I wish it had been given to the county attorney's office.
I'm trying to follow you.
No, I apologize for making a joke.
I know, it's real funny, but who's the recipient of this?
So four, if you're looking at four, A4.
This is the Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission?
Yes, that is the Omaha Public Building Commission.
All right.
And they had expenses.
And so they got 3.9 million, and do we know what that was spent for?
They, the answer is yes. They presented that to the board, and the board approved that allocation, and it was vetted through Deloitte and then incorporated into the SOW. So the answer is yes.
But it's not in here, is it? Okay, I guess I'll just take it on faith that we gave them almost 4 million, and they spent it on what they were supposed to. But I really am a little confused. If we've already given them the money, this is just reducing it to a written contract? Is that it?
It's a little more than that. I believe that the board has asked that the entities execute the contract before the disbursement. And so I don't.
The money hasn't been dispersed?
I don't believe it has in its entirety. You've given DOT COM, excuse me, Public Building Commission, I believe you've given them two separate allocations. And so I'm not sure if the first allocation has already been given. I can't speak to that, if it's been distributed. Joe's nodding yes. So the first allocation has been distributed. And then they came back and asked for a second allocation, because they had more CARES Act expenditures.
Okay, so the first allocation is 3.9 million?
The total allocation is actually 3.9, is my understanding. Our office incorporated the both allocations into this SOW to cover them both. So you didn't have to have two things today.
Okay. So we have, you, the county attorney's office decided we had to have a written contract, so that's why we're doing this. Is that right?
No, I don't think that's quite a summation of what happened.
Why are we doing this, then?
The CARES Act has certain requirements. The federal CARES Act has certain requirements that a subrecipient needs to meet. And so the board had asked and directed our office to go ahead and work with these entities and have a formal agreement with them, so they would agree to comply with those federal requirements.
Well, who on the board asked you to do that? Pat, Chris, or somebody? Okay, I'm just, I'm baffled why we're doing this so late and what it is that.
And so this, you've seen this, I apologize for directing you to priors, but you've seen the same agreement many, many times, this template, this subaward agreement. And we've done this with many recipients. And so pretty much everyone who's not a county entity has entered into a subaward.
Okay. I think you've answered, answered as best as possible. Thank you.
All right, then I will bring us back to where we were, which is calling for the vote. We already actually called for the vote, but.
I'll vote yes.
I would call for the vote again. The clerk said he had to redo things so we could go back to the microphone. So I would like to ask the clerk one more time to call for the vote.
One more time, I'll vote for it.
You've had your 10 minutes of questioning. You should have asked during that time. That was a worded a month ago.
It's an easy thing just to state the dollar amount.
If you want, I could take them through it. So if you go to the second part of the handout, which is the summary of the 35 separate transactions that the county board has approved, and we can go that. And so you want to find out for the Public Building Commission and DOT COM? Are those, to your interest?
Fine. My only question is, what's a dollar amount of the others? It would have been simple if it had been printed on the agenda, but what, just, can we get that?
Yes. So I would take you, we can go down through Valley. Is, yeah, item 24 and 28. So the Valley allocation is 172,093. Then the Village of Waterloo is two pieces. There's the municipality of 6,468. 24, and then also 28. And then their fire department came back and got some equipment for 84,480. And then there's the Village of Boystown, which was the municipality first approved, On October 20th, and on November 10th, the Boystown Volunteer Fire Department was allocated an additional 300,721.
Okay, I would sure like to bring.
I'm sorry, then there's number five.
Oh, come on.
Well, it's the last one. We might as well do them all.
Okay, with the DOT COM, there were two allocations. Let's see where we, the first one was on September 22nd. They were reimbursed 343,341. And then there is one on today's agenda for, where is it here? Oh, the very last item, item 35, another 88,818.
Okay, so the lion's share is the building commission's 3.9 million.
Of that 3.9 million, the lion's share of that is the 3.3 million that was allocated for the HVAC equipment for the MUD building.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote, please.
Okay, thank you. And.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kraft, did he wish? Okay, I won't see him now. All right. Please vote.
For what? Well, I mean, that's what Commissioner, Mr. Lorenz was trying to do, is go through each item and.
No, the motion was for all five. You should have asked long before we voted, during your three opportunities to address it. Because we've already voted. I called for the vote several times. I'm not going to keep rehashing over and over and over. Is his microphone off? Good.
All right, so I'm, Commissioner Boyle, are you going to vote?
Well, you should have asked during the discussion. We've been talking about it for half an hour now.
For which? Five? Yeah, it would be the 343,000 plus the 800, or the 88,000. So what is about 425,000? And commissioners, I know this is complex, but we've taken nine months to allocate 166 million dollars through over 35 different transactions and allocations. So there's a lot of data here. So I know that it's a little bit hard to follow, but I've been through it, and we can reconcile every dollar. Okay.
Okay, for folks in the audience or on TV, there were handouts provided, and if you want a copy, you can take one of my cards here, and I can email it to you. For those listening, it's danesh@douglascounty-ne.gov. Again, danesh@douglascounty-ne.gov. And that goes for any handout. If you want, just contact me. And motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh, I don't see that you appeared. All right. Motion passes, five voting yes. Commissioner Morgan not voting, or not present, and Commissioner Kavanaugh present, not voting.
Thank you. I would like to now have further discussion concerning CARES Act. This is about, this is our last meeting of the year. This is when we look back now at how things went with the CARES Act on where we stand. I'm very proud of the record that Douglas County had in dispersing its CARES Act funds. Incidentally, I would challenge somebody to look at our funding package and compare it to the state's funding package, the two entities that both had monies to allocate. I'm very proud of the job that Douglas County did in allocating our funds. My only regret is that we never were able to get any kind of help to our frontline employees that are dealing directly with COVID positive. We offered them additional money as hazard pay, but apparently they were fed the information that if they said no, everybody would get it. But that didn't work under CARES Act. We could only do the frontline employees, and therefore, we never were able to give them the hazard pay I would have liked. That's my only regret, other than that, and that we still have a few million left. I wish we'd been able to get every nickel out, doing exactly what it was intended. But we did get, get it out into the community, meeting the needs. I am proud of our record. As we look back now and kind of recap, Joe, on how we, how we did, I'd like to go over a little bit of how we got here and where we are. Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Joe, you said this was complex. You have explained this at least five different times during the course of this, these hearings. I don't know how it can be any less complex, because you have made it very clear. And it's apparent that some people just don't understand numbers. I just, I didn't have the handout. I was watching it on the screen, but I understood it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Boyle.
Commissioner Kraft, it's great to have you here in person. But I do want to say, I don't have trouble with the numbers, but in this case, there were no numbers. And that's all I've been trying to ask was, and that's what finally came out, was what these dollar amounts were, because there was nothing, nothing there. And so it's not.
For the agreements, yeah.
So I mean, it's, I have complete faith in Joe. I trust what you did. You're an outstanding person and an outstanding employee. And I don't have any questions about a nickel of this funding. But it's just it didn't have a dollar amount, which was, you know, one was three, almost 4 million, another was four and a quarter plus. So that's why I asked. And then I, to tell you the truth, I'm curious about another item on the agenda, I guess, later on, on item. There's some other funds that were given. Item K, but we'll deal with that later.
Yeah, that's not CARES Act money either.
I don't know, okay, maybe not.
I guess, I would like to kind of hone in a little bit on the local government piece of the CARES Act funding, because there is some confusion, it seems, about what the intent of these funds were. How much did we allocate to local governments?
Well, there's really two pieces. There was 30 million dollars that we allocated to the city of Omaha, of which the state and us both contributed 30 million apiece for a total of 60 million. And then there was 10 million that we allocated to the smaller units and municipalities. And also some of that went to higher education also. So there were about, I can't remember exactly if it's 13 or 15 smaller allocations that went out to the cities and fire departments within Douglas County. And then we also gave money to the Creighton Dental School, UNMC, and to Metro Community College through the local government. And that totaled close to 6 million dollars that we gave out to those units of local government.
Thank you. When we, we worked a long time to try to satisfy the city of Omaha. And I think we did. I'm pleased with how we did that. We ended up giving the city 30 million dollars. The state gave them 30 million. So they received a total of 60 million of CARES Act funding. Was there any expectation that they would provide rental assistance, food? Any, what were they supposed to do? What did Omaha do with the 30 million we gave them? What did we tell them to do with that money?
We didn't tell them to do anything. It was, they used the presumptive public health and public safety salaries for their police and fire department, which were qualifying CARES Act expenses. And so then that money, both the money, the 30 million we gave them, and the 30 million the state went to them, went to the city's general fund. And, you know, you can make, I think part of it, they're going to use for, to make up lost revenue from restaurant and sales tax. And, but it's up to their discretion how they want to spend that, because, you know, it was a qualifying CARES Act money, and then once they get the money, it's just like when we put money into our general fund reserve, it's up to the discretion of the commissioners how it gets spent. So it's up to city management how that money gets spent.
And after we came up with a funding formula to satisfy Omaha, I remember you saying, this is going to benefit the county, because we're going to treat everybody the same.
Yes.
And so the county, using the same funding formula we needed to get Omaha up to that 60 million dollar figure, ended up producing money for the county as well, using the exact same formula, right?
Right, in all the municipalities, ourselves, the city of Omaha, the smaller municipalities, we've strived for consistency in our standards of how we allocated the money, yes.
Okay. So I perceive that the county really is wearing two hats in this process. We are the dispercer. We are the disposer of funds. But on the other hand, we are still a local government entity. And incidentally, we didn't ask to be the disposer of funds. It was just given to us. You know, people think we wanted it or did something nefarious to get it. In any event, we have served as the disposer, but we are also a recipient as a local government entity. And we received 26 and a half million dollars, just like Omaha got 60 million. Just like there's no strings attached on that money that Omaha got. Are there any strings attached on the money the county got? We're not expected to do rental aid, food assistance?
No.
We had separate funds for that.
Yes, this, the 26 and a half million was under presumptive public health and public safety salaries.
Okay. And so the county board voted a few months ago to transfer that into our general fund, right?
Yes.
Is that unanimous?
I believe so.
Okay, because I've heard it called money laundering now. And to me, if this was money laundering, that's when it occurred, was when the county put 26 and a half million into our general reserve fund on a unanimous vote.
Yeah, we voted on it on September 29th was when it was approved by the county board.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to be clear on that. Again, I'm proud of the job we did. You know, next pandemic, we'll do better. Next time we're given a lump sum of money, you know, we'll have a little bit of experience. This has been an amazing thing to go through, and I am proud of the job Douglas County did in dispersing these funds. And that's why I asked Joe to share whatever information we can with the world here as we end our year of just where all of this money went. And as I say, I'm happy to put our record up against the states or anybody else's around. Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Joe. And I just wanted, we can put this information, excuse me, on our website under our CARES Act. And the important piece of this is the first sheet is kind of a executive summary, if you will, a condensed version of where we are at this point in time with the dollars that we were given and the dollars that went out and where they went out. The following pages are a more detailed... The detail of that first page. So we can go through those pages and see exactly where and who received the CARES Act dollars, correct?
Yes, Commissioner. If you remember, when we started this whole process out, we had that one chart where we kind of earmarked it into four or five different categories and said, all right, this is how we're going to kind of allocate the money. And so this first page just kind of follows that and shows what happened with those actual allocations. And then the second pages are just really by transaction and allocation of each amount to get to the total.
Okay, so if any citizen had a question of, just say, more detail of the nonprofits, we can go through these pages and give them the detail of each one of the nonprofits and how much those nonprofits receive.
Well, we can do that because what we did under the CARES Act is we allocated the 28 million totally to Omaha Community Foundation. And then, once we do that, they kind of responsible for the allocations to individual nonprofits and arts and things like that. But I, they send me reports and records. They, they're keeping very detailed records of exactly how much went to who and when. Yes.
Well, and I just want to piggyback on what Commissioner Chair Duda said. This was a lot of money that was given to Douglas County. And I think you and our partners with Deloitte and all of the staff and folks that have been involved have done a really good job of making sure that we are accountable. And again, for the dollars and where they went. So thank you for this.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
There are any? Are you talking about the money that is being transferred to the county general fund via the presumptive salaries?
Yeah, is that 26 million or something?
26 million to date with more coming once we have the final...
I can't hear you.
There was 26 and a half million to date. And then they'll probably, my estimate is we'll have around 10 million more by December 30th when the program formally ends, that we would transfer over in January when we have the final numbers.
Okay. Is there, are there any restrictions on how that money can be spent?
Only what the county board deems appropriate.
Well, what happened to all the restrictions that came down and we had all the...
Those were, that's when it was CARES Act money. Once we transfer it over, it's no longer CARES Act money.
Okay, well, that, maybe that's how it got the laundered label. So suddenly the restrictions are all gone and it can be, we could buy everybody in Omaha a bowling ball or a rosary, huh?
It's whatever the Commissioners deem appropriate.
Okay, who wants rosaries? Who wants a bowling ball? Okay. I think it's something that we need to... It bothers me that we had all these people, you know, that we, frankly, that we didn't give rent to because they didn't have, couldn't prove everything was COVID-related or some other such thing, or the landlord didn't send them a form. And now we can do whatever we want with that money.
Yeah, like I say, it's up whatever the Commissioners decide. You know, as long as it's not illegal, immoral, or unethical, I think then it's up to you.
Well, I guess I won't, I don't want to have any suggestions then. No, I do. Okay, I just wanted to get that clarified because there, I know there are people here today who want to speak to some other needs that are unmet. And that, so you think it's going to be about 36 million before it's over?
Let's just say, to be conservative, 35 million, yes.
Okay. And do you think, are there plans to spend it all? Do you have requests?
Well, there's one item on today's agenda... Well, there's actually two items on today's agenda to spend 10 and a half million of it.
Okay, what items are they, do you know?
It would be under the consentage item...
The Loco Nebraska.
Item K.
Item K.
And then also on administrative services on the 10 million dollars.
Where's the, where's that administrative? What item is that?
Page six.
Page six? And that's, oh, I see.
Page seven.
Okay, I got it. I, me? I think it's, it is...
Five make, Commissioner Boyle. Item K, the resolution allocating $500,000 to Loco Nebraska Cooperative, that's page four. And then the other item we were discussing was on page seven, resolution allocating 10 million dollars to the Douglas County Justice Center construction.
I think it's six, isn't it?
Well, it's...
On ours, it's six.
Oh, I'm sorry. But it's item B1, I apologize.
There you go.
B1, B1. Bingo.
Okay, are you through, Commissioner Boyle?
I am, thank you.
Commissioner Borgerson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And with the conversation that Commissioner Boyle is talking about, I have no problem with having a discussion today about moving a million, million and a half over to Omaha Community Foundation for them to be able to disperse based on the needs of our communities as they come forward. They've done such a great job of being able to take those concerns, those needs, and distribute that money. I have no problem putting those dollars or giving those dollars to OCF. And we can again come up with the agreement by the first of the year, working through it. But your point is well taken that I'm sure there's still needs out there and this would be a beginning of addressing those needs.
Having it go, but I understand what you're saying.
Part of where I would like on the beginning of the year to have conversation is the mental health issue that you and I have talked about in the past.
Okay. But I think Salvation Army, if I could say, Salvation Army and Together and a few others are, and frankly, United Way are capable of just giving that out with any further red tape. But anyway, that's, and there's a man, a young, a man who wants to speak about mortgages this morning too. So thank you, Bill. That's a good suggestion, Commissioner Borgerson.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
You know, this is exactly how we should do this in public with due deliberation. I think that having these discussions helps us give clarity and transparency to what we're doing. I'm not sure that moving monies around with no discussion as being anticipated today with the 10 million for the kids jail is good public policy at all. But I know it's going to be attempted here later in the agenda. The idea that we have unmet needs is exactly right. The idea that the 36 million dollars layover is anything other than CARES relief money is exactly wrong and money laundering. It's simple. This money was given us to help alleviate the impact of COVID-19, the pandemic, which is raging, killing people in our community, making tens of thousands sick, shutting down our economy, and it's going to get worse. So having a discussion on what we do with the 36 million is totally appropriate. We are not in the business of propping up construction projects with relief money during a pandemic. And what's being discussed here today is a good preliminary discussion of what we should do when the new board sits in 2021 that the people have already selected. So we should lay these things over, have that discussion in '21 when the people's representatives who have been elected are sitting here. And everybody can see what's going on, rather than talking about relief money like it's construction money when it's not, and talking about sleight of hands, like, well, we put it in the general fund, so it's not relief money anymore, which is not true, and making it a cost overrun for a construction project, rather than meeting the needs that we all know exist with rent, utilities, food, and other needs of individuals and businesses in our community. We need to have this money to meet that need in 2021 and not waste it on cost overruns on construction projects, which is trying to be attempted here today.
Commissioner Kraft.
If somebody in the audience would count how many times Commissioner Kavanaugh repeats himself, I hope you have a lot of lead in your pencils because you'll notice when we were doing one of these items, I started counting late and I counted 31 times where you repeated himself before we had this five-minute limit. So get your pencils and pads out and start making hash marks as to how many times I'm repeating this three times, Commissioner Kavanaugh, because I've noticed that everything has to be repeated three times for you, at least, for you to understand. Especially budget items will have to be explained 20 or 30 times. And the city's budget, should you become mayor, is a much more complex budget. So I found today's meeting enlightening, and I also found it not difficult to understand with paper in front of me, even though I was following it without paper on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Okay. Is there anything further at this point? We'll come back.
I mean, it's just when, we do have the specific appropriations for the last ones that we want to do today for the CARES Act money. And that's up to you if you want to do them now or if you want to come back to them.
Okay, and those are under item B in presentations, right?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and go to that since we're already talking about that. So now, now we are going to consider under presentations, item B, the CARES Act update. We have a number, six requests, and they're under item B.
Okay. I can take you through that very quickly. The first four are requests for additional funding. We've had, we allocated amounts previously to these four county departments, but they've come back and said that in order to institute everything they want to do, it's been a little bit more expensive than they anticipated. So those four groups are Corrections, which is asking for an additional 1,349,898. And a lot of that was driven by personnel cost of the contractors within the facility who, while they're doing their work, they have to have corrections, guards there to kind of oversee and make sure things are proceeding smoothly. So that's what a lot of that is, labor cost. The election commissioner came back and said during the course of the election and training and things they had to do for the general election, they incurred an additional 18,000 in pandemic-related expenses. The district court is installing cameras and entry systems into the courtrooms. That was a little bit more labor-intensive and they had to get some additional technology. So that costs an additional $30,141. And then finally, the sheriff had, in the last quarter, had $12,182 of additional pandemic-related expenses, primarily related to PP&amp;E. So those are the four county departments who are asking for additional CARES Act money. The fifth one is DOTCOM, which is asking for $88,818 of pandemic-related costs that they incurred primarily in having people, assisting people with their telework needs for county employees who are working from home. And DOTCOM's been the enabler there, and those are allowable costs under the CARES Act. And so those are the departments. And then finally, as the program, the original agreement we had with Deloitte ends on December 30th, when the CARES Act ends, but a lot of the filing requirements and data to put in the portals and things is going to be required. So the first quarter is going to be still of 2021 is going to be pretty intensive from record-keeping and filing with the federal government, our actual costs. So this is a request to extend our engagement with Deloitte for three additional months and allocate another $100,000 to get us to the finish line with them.
Do we have a motion before we begin discussion? Okay, motion by Commissioner Borgerson, second by Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, thank you. Joe, on item number six, what have we, well, what have we paid Deloitte so far?
So far, I think we, you know, coming in today, we had allocated them about a million four, and I think of that we had incurred expenses of somewhere between a million one and a million two. And the majority of that is running the program, the desk, to administer the rental assistance.
The what assistance?
The rental assistance.
Oh, okay. So that was above and beyond what...
That's in the number, but it was not what was originally contemplated that...
Okay. And you summed up by saying that the filing and so forth that has to take place now, there's quite a bit of that and so forth. Didn't a company like Deloitte anticipate that and put that into our contract in the first place? Are you saying they're coming back and saying they're surprised?
No, I don't think it's a surprise. I think they just always assumed, let's see what things look like at December 30th, and then we can give you a much better estimate of what has to be done and how much it's going to be, and how much it's going to cost.
Did they tell us that at the beginning when we were, that we'll come back and tell you what we think we need? Did they do that sort of...
Yeah, we always, you know, once the Treasury guidelines came out and we saw these filing requirements, we knew that this thing was not, well, the expenditure of CARES Act money would have to end at December 30th. There would be a lot of close-up and regulatory filings in the next 90 days after December 30th.
Okay, well, for my money, without any other documentation, I can't support this. I think they knew that when they came in, that they should have. If they didn't, it's, the $100,000 is on them. So I think they've made enough money doing this, and particularly when they scooped up the rental program too. So I think they've made enough money doing this, and particularly when they scooped up the rental program too, they made additional money. So I don't think they need the $100,000 myself, so I'd like to consider that separately if I could.
All right.
Thanks, Joe.
We will do so.
You're doing a good job.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I agree. Joe, in total, all in, what have we paid Deloitte? Because you indicate here that we paid them, I think you said 1.2, but then on the sheet that you handed us moments ago, there's a 1.561750 million to Deloitte. So, I mean, in addition, there are monies that they've received for the rental assistance program, and God knows what else.
No, that's in the, in the million five.
Okay, so all in, what have we paid Deloitte out of CARES?
As of today, we've paid them about $1,004,000, but, you know, we're right in the middle of December. So we're saying that at the end of this month, we would have paid them probably a little over $1,004,004. And what we're requesting here is another $100,000, because, you know, the filing requirements with the federal government are complex. They really give us good advice, and it's important because we want to make sure that at the end of the day, we don't have to give any money back.
I get that, I get that, thank you. But why then on the sheet that you gave us is?
Do you want volume up or volume down?
Why on the sheet that you gave us does it say Deloitte fees $1,561,750?
Because that would be the total amount of fees allocated to Deloitte if the $100,000 is approved today.
Okay, and that includes what Deloitte has charged us for the rental assistance?
That's everything, yes.
Okay. And the original Deloitte contract, which I voted against, I believe was $300,000, and now we're north of $1,500,000. And I agree with Commissioner Boyle. They should have been able to see the end of the year when we did this contract in, I don't know, May. But they're coming back to ask for another $100,000 to finish the contract that they'd already agreed to?
And, you know, the CARES Act has been a continuously evolving process in terms of guidelines and requirements and what the Treasury is saying, what the Inspector General is saying. I don't think anybody knew when we received the initial Deloitte bid what was all encompassed in this. And really, it's become really fairly complex with the Office of the Inspector General and how this material has to be in the portals.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I think joining Commissioner Boyle on saying, let's vote on this separately because it doesn't pass the smell test.
Okay, are you through?
For now.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I would only say that.
On this issue, and I do want to consider it separately, but when they made their presentation, they touted themselves as we're, we've got 894 offices around the country and call centers everywhere, and we're the folks who brought you Katrina, and we've got a big presence in Washington, D.C., and we know all these people, and we can handle this in our sleep. Now they're asking us for another 100 grand, so I don't, I don't think they need it. Ask them to itemize stuff if they do.
Well, they do itemize. When they send us a bill, everything is itemized and on an hourly basis.
Okay, well.
And I think that if you ever talk to any member of staff who's been working with the Deloitte team, we all, you know, are so thankful that we've had them to work with because this whole process is.
I don't disagree with that, but they're supposed to be pros. They were supposed to be the people who were in the know. So if you're in the know, part of the deal is that you tell us what you'll, what you need, and then if you blow it, you blow it.
And every dollar that we put through, forward for approval for the commissioners, we've gone back and vetted with Deloitte and reviewed with them and depended on their opinion before allocating that money.
Well, I know, Joe, you did a great job. It wasn't, you know, you did the monster of the work, as far as I'm concerned, on this whole thing with our staff, not, not Deloitte. So anyway, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft.
By using Deloitte, we didn't run into the trouble that Iowa did.
Exactly.
And that in itself pays for a good portion of the money that we paid Deloitte. I mean, when you make a mistake like Iowa did, it can be devastating to the audit when you have to pay funds back. So that is all, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will separate the question and vote on Items B 1 through 5 separately, and then Item B 6 separately. So I'm ready to call the vote on Items B 1 through 5. Further questions or comments to the motion before us, and then I would call for the vote, please.
Motion passes 6 to 0.
Thank you. We will come back then to Item 6 for consideration of that. Motion by Commissioner Burson, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve Item 6. Could we please vote?
One moment, please. Motion passes 4 to 2. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Boyle voting no. All other commissioners present voting yes.
Thank you. We're going to be skipping around today because I do want to get, while we're on the subject, I would like to keep us going to the $10 million consideration. However, I want to take a brief break from this because we do have Dr. Jim Matisson's family is standing by on Zoom. And, and I, we have Item C. Item 3C is a resolution honoring Dr. Jim Matisson upon his passing for as many years of service to youth and families in Douglas County.
Mr. Chair, could we do Item A as well after that one? It's a recognition as well.
Yes, yes, we will, yes, we will, fine, fine. For the moment, we're on Item C. Brad?
Okay, well, thank you all for allowing us to kind of cut in here a little bit. I really do appreciate it. Jim Matisson spent, I think he started with us in the year 2000. He was the first person that really provided the unique set of skills that helped us to work with kids that have mental health issues. And Jim was such a wonderful person. He wasn't a county employee, but I guarantee you that there is not a person at the Douglas County Youth Center that didn't feel like he was a part of our family. I was fortunate to be able to count him, count him as a friend, and I'm going to miss him. And I thank Tracy and his children, Gabe and Maddie, for sharing, you know, him with us. He gave up so much of his time, and we've had a few instances over my 20-some years at the youth center that have been traumatic for both staff and kids. And Jim always stepped up and came in and spent time with us and really, really helped us to get through some, some difficult situations. And I'm going to miss him a lot. I don't know if Tracy or his parents, I know they're, they're on the Zoom call. I don't know if you have anything that, that you would like to say?
Thank you, Brad. This is Tracy Matisson. I am Jim's wife. He loved being at the youth center, and it gave him so much joy to see kids turn their lives around. Now, we know there are several out there that have not, but he always tried to find the good in them, no matter what they had been convicted for. And he always thought that there would be a chance that they could break those bonds of maybe the way that they had grown up, whatever their adversarities were in their life. He always gave them the benefit of the doubt. And I just want everyone to know at DCYC that he loved you all. He loved going in there and spending time with all of you, and the connections and friendships that he gained will be forever. So I just thank you for that.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy. No team, we're not getting hearing. Commissioner Burson. It's hearing us now. It's here. My earphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my condolences to Jim's family. I actually knew Jim from his work at the youth center, but it was back in August that we had a conversation that he wanted to continue working in some capacity with Douglas County and wanted us to meet and talk about that. And we never caught that meeting, but his heart, he always, always led his work with his heart for the kids at the youth center. And once he left the youth center and started his own service up, a business up, we were going to have a conversation about how to keep him involved just because of how he led and how he worked. And so he will be sorely missed, not only at the youth center, but also in the community. He was a wonderful man. You all should be so proud. And again, my condolences to all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, my condolences are short and to the point, but you talked about the joy that he got from his work. And I know you know that he brought us joy, the way he treated those young people, the way he tried to communicate to them that they were worthy, that they mattered, that their lives were important, that they could change things. The kind of joy that he brought to us, I'm not so sure that was even greater than the joy he received from the work he did, but it was really a two-way street, and we are so grateful that he came our way, and we will never forget him.
Thank you. Was there somebody else on Zoom trying to talk here?
Yes, his father. Hold on.
Please, please, this is the opportunity.
My name is Don Matisson, and that was my son. And of course, I'm very proud of what he did at the youth center, at the correction center. He, he worked very hard, and I know my son, he goes the extra mile. And, and he has a heart, a real, a heart for everybody, his family, his, his family at, at the youth center. And he dearly loved to help people. He was, had a lot of, lot of engines going all at one time. And I'm so proud of him, and, and I thank you for this tribute to my son, Jim Matisson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Burson, second by Commissioner Boyle. Could we please vote?
Voting yes. EJ?
Motion passes 7 to 0.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to Jim's family for sharing not only today, but through these many years. He will indeed be missed. Thank you all.
There it is.
Commissioner Burson.
So we're consistent. I'd ask the clerk to say that Commissioner Morgan was voting virtually.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Morgan was voting virtually, all other commissioners voting in person.
Thank you. Well, and while we're on recognition and proclamations, as I said, I could also, so I guess we'll just go through all of them here briefly. So next, we will come back to Item A, recognition of Roy Johnson, who worked for the Douglas County Youth Center for 15 years.
Yeah, Roy was, you know, when you start doing things like this, which not a whole lot of fun, but it's amazing how quickly time passes. You couldn't have, I would have never swore that Roy was, I couldn't have swore that Roy was with us for, for 15 years. It certainly doesn't, it certainly does not feel like that. Roy was a juvenile detention technician. Like Jimmy's got a wife, he's got two children. He's been battling cancer for the last two or three years. And, you know, his strength and his dedication to his job was just really an inspiration to everyone. He, he wanted to be at, he wanted to be at work, and then he, he got there every opportunity he could. Of course, sometimes the illness didn't allow for that to happen, but he was, he was there when he could. And he'll, he'll certainly be missed as well. And thank you again for taking the time to, to recognize Mr. Roy Johnson.
Thank you for that. Do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Burson to approve Item A. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote? Incidentally, Brad, I have a proclamation up here for each of these.
I'll make sure that they get.
That I would ask you guys to then deliver if you would.
Commissioner Morgan, are you voting? Okay. Motion passes 6 to 0. Commissioner Morgan is absent currently.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Item B, resolution recognizing the members of the Douglas County Complete Count Committee for their efforts in educating the public on the 2020 census and encouraging the public's participation. Commissioner Burson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think Greg is here, but I just thought it was important that the census 2020 was, again, so important this year, and to have individuals that dedicated their time, volunteered their time to make sure that we had a complete count on our 2020 census was very important. And so in your packet, you do have the summary report, and I don't know if Greg wants to come up and highlight any of it, but today especially is about recognizing those individuals, and they're listed in your packet as well, on that committee for the due diligence that they did and the time and energy they put in to make sure that everyone counted. And so Greg, do you want to just maybe highlight the excellent work that the committee did end up doing?
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. Greg Yule, Executive Director of MAPPA. We had the pleasure of, of working with Commissioner Burson and other county board members and the Complete Count Committee in Douglas County. It was really focused on outside of the city of Omaha. There was kind of a pair there with the city of Omaha itself. So we really provide the staff support, but I think it was great because we had representatives that the county board members had appointed. We also had representatives from each of the non-Omaha jurisdictions. So, you know, Bennington Valley, Waterloo, Boyz Town, and Ralston were all represented. So it was a good collaborative effort. We did end up, obviously, a challenging year, lots of concerns about, you know, people coming out, coming to your door and things of that nature. But we ended up with 62% of the census tracts had a higher self-response rate from 2010. So I think, given the challenges this year, it was, is all in all a good effort. Encourage you to read through the report. If I may, I would also like to veer slightly. Commissioner Duda has been an absolute pillar of MAPPA during his 28 years. Most of those years, he has been on our board. Seven of those years, he's been the chair. He's been part of our council officials group. He's attended finance committee for every month during all of his terms. So last week at our board meeting, we did do a recognition of Commissioner Duda. I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly hearsay. We really appreciate it, MAPPA. He's been a big part of our organization for the past three decades, so.
Thank you.
And I just might add that the work that MAPPA has done on this, to be able to keep the, the committee intact and moving through the pandemic and all of the changes that we had to do, you guys did a spectacular job as well. And yes, I agree with the leadership that Commissioner Duda has had on MAPPA for all these years. It's, it is notable, and I appreciate you saying something about that, so thank you.
Thank you, Boyle.
A motion to approve.
Okay. Motion on the second to approve Item B, recognizing the members. recognizing the members of the Douglas County Complete Count Committee. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes, PJ Morgan.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Commissioners Kraft and Morgan voting virtually. All other commissioners voting in person.
Thank you. The next resolution, I'd like to leave to the end, but I see my family all gathered in back and stuff, so I suppose we should move on to these. So I would move on to resolutions D and E? Or we have resolutions recognizing Commissioner Kraft and myself?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to begin with Commissioner Kraft. Working bottom up. I'd like to read the resolution first and then I move it. Resolution is for Commissioner Kraft and his years of services, whereas the Douglas County Commissioner, Mark Kraft, was first elected as Commissioner on November 4th, 2008. And whereas Mr. Kraft was reelected two more times, serving a total of 12 years on the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. And whereas Mr. Kraft, who was a graduate of Omaha Central High School and Creighton University, also served on the Omaha City Council for two terms from 1997 to 2005. And whereas Mr. Kraft has been instrumental in many successes while on the Douglas County Board, including a push for transparency. And whereas when Mr. Kraft served as the chair in 2012, he was proud to make budget hearings open to the public. He also pushed to get all Douglas County payments searchable online so residents could see exactly where Douglas County dollars were being spent. And whereas Mr. Kraft played a significant role in several community projects over the years, including the Douglas County Fair. And whereas since 1972, Mr. Kraft has been highly involved in the Douglas County community, served in a variety of capacities, including chairs, committees, boards, and neighborhood associations. And whereas Mr. Kraft said he's looking forward to enjoying more time with his wife, Joan, and their family during his retirement, that therefore be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County that this Board hereby honors Commissioner Kraft for his 12 years of public service, extraordinary leadership, and dedication to the Douglas County community. And I move approval. And I'll just say, Mr. Chair, before it goes around, that Commissioner Kraft's wife's in the back here. And of all of us that do these jobs, it's hard to express the angst sometime that it has on the family members. So in addition to congratulating him, I want to congratulate her and just, just say to Mark, you know, simplicity is best. But the two things that you can definitely say about a man, I learned is that when he tells you, you know, where he's at, that you can believe it wholeheartedly. Mark has been an example not only for me and a lot of times because he's walked out on some planks that I know when he was at the city council, for the smoking ban and a whole lot of other things that he stood on his principle. And I greatly appreciate that and wish him well. And he's been a great example. With that, his flat. Back in your hands, if you want to direct it, to the members that may want to speak.
I'd like to thank everybody very much. I know I can't make everybody happy, and I know I haven't made everybody happy. And it is hard on the family, especially when they get letters and threats because of something I've done. And I can go back to the smoking ban at the city council. I could go back to the skate park, which was my doing. And I thought the neighborhood group was going to hang me first. Then they thanked me once it was in use. I can talk about a lot of things that are hard on the family. And I know all of us have experienced this at one time or another. The community can be brutal, but I love, and I've always loved helping people, including when I had my business. I went out of the way to help people in the community and get things done. Often, I didn't see myself as the doer. I saw myself as a facilitator. And as some of you know, my health has not been as good as I'd like it to be, but I still have been doing everything I can on Zoom or on home or going back into the back room to rest for a minute. So I'm watching it when I'm not here. And again, I want to thank everybody. Thank you.
I'll let you speak in a second, Commissioner Boyle. I want to share a quick, quick story. My girl, I've known Commissioner Kraft for a long time. He's one of the few people I really consider a friend that I've made in politics. My friendship with him started when we wanted to expand our jail. And the city said, no, you can't come closer to 16th Street. And one of the city council members owned a business on the other side of this street. And so easily could have used his position to protect his business. At first, the city balked when we said we wanted to expand the jail. And I went and had a private meeting with Commissioner Kraft about what can we do to make this more palatable? I found him to be so amazingly reasonable and easy to deal with. Bob Civic said I should, he was on the city council at the time and said I should get some kind of Nobel Prize for making peace over this. Wrong. All I had to do was talk to Mark. And we got it resolved. He, he has been a real pleasure to work with. We're enough on the, on the same wavelength of how we look at things that I have thoroughly enjoyed my friendship with him. And I owe him one drink of, we're going to have a toast of a fine Scotch tomorrow afternoon at his house. So I'm looking forward to that. We don't, oh, Commissioner Boyle, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's fine. Well, he is, Mark is a longtime, longtime friend and represents a part of the city that Ann and I raised our family in Dundee. And he has always been there for all of the really tight issues that need to be brought up and supported. I remember I was driving through the neighborhood once on 46th Street, and there was a swastika pointed on a, painted on a barricade that was fresh because I never saw it before. And I called Mark first, and he said to call the Anti-Defamation League, which I did. And the city kicked him out, and it was gone in about two hours. But it's someone that has lived with that kind of hatred that sometimes isn't too subtle. And it always bothered me, and I have a certain affinity for my Jewish brothers and sisters because of the kind of turmoil that they've been, they've been given by people who hate. So I am going to miss Mark and his dry comments where he's always criticizing me, which is okay, telling me to be quiet, which I will in two seconds. But I really enjoy his company, and Joan was always a wonderful partner. I used to be able to pick up with them in Washington and go have lunch and so forth. And it was always a wonderful, wonderful time. So I look forward to some of that when things finally settle down in Omaha and we can go up to Pitch or someplace in Dundee. So Mark, congratulations on a stellar career, one in which you've been totally honest with everyone that I know. I've never, never heard a word against you. I never have. So congratulations on your retirement and making it through this, this wonderful place.
Commissioner Borgeson?
If I could, after Mary Ann.
Okay, very good. Mary Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And congratulations, Mark, really on your retirement. You know, we feel bad that your health isn't as great as you would like it. But as you said, you haven't missed a beat even through all of your health issues. And so we do appreciate that. Appreciate you being on the board and serving with you. And as Commissioner Rogers said, to Joanie, too. I enjoyed actually the NACO meetings when we would meet up in passing at those meetings. And I know she enjoyed, enjoyed them as well. But now you can enjoy a whole lot of things during your retirement. And so thank you for your years of service. Congratulations for your years of service. And go and enjoy as much as you possibly can.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft?
Commissioner Boyle? I also had a swastika painted on my garage and some other nasty things related to my Judaism. I had a rock thrown through my front storm door with a note attached. I had email with hate mail. And all of this, yeah, none of it scared me because I know they were chicken. I know they were spineless, if that's the way they had to tell me. In my store, I was told it to my face. I had somebody drop a basket of glassware when she made a nasty comment about Jews. And I said, I'm Jewish. And she called her husband and held out this basket and dropped it, a nasty comment about Jews. And I said, I'm Jewish. And she called her husband and held out this basket and dropped it, a nasty comment about Jews. And I said, I'm Jewish. Interesting. So when I was closing my store, this lady came back in the store and wanted to pay more than the glass was worth and apologized to me. And I've had a number of things such as that where people have later regretted what they said or did. And that is very, very satisfying. And I'm done. Thank you.
Oh, PJ, Commissioner Morgan, thank you. Oh, we're not hearing you yet, PJ. Oh. Karen, can't you work your magic on? You can't work your magic? We might as well hire a real teenager then.
That's a great line.
Okay. PJ?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just want to express my thank you to Mark and Joan. And I had the pleasure of sitting next to Mark for a lot of my years on the board and appreciated his candid comments from time to time. And also want to pay my respect to his mother and father, who also, his father who served on the city council, not only their contribution in government, but also their business downtown and staying with it downtown and making it what it is and helping with the community in our, especially our downtown area. And I think what you said about the jail shows the kind of individual Mark is that he wants the best for all of us and not just in a selfish way. So wish you the best and good health. Take care, Mark.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Okay.
I always said, when I was in business, we're downtown and we love it.
That was a great line.
I just want to say a few words, too. I'm Maureen Boyle. I'm the commissioner-elect for Commissioner Kraft's position. So.
Is she on? Okay, Maureen, I have a hard time hearing you.
Sure, sure. I'm Maureen Boyle. I'm commissioner-elect for, for Mark's position. And I just want to say that I have big shoes to fill. I'm honored to be succeeding him. I want to say that when I decided to run in the primary, I had some other opponents. And I went to Mark and asked for his support. And he said, no. So not directly, but indirectly saying that he had support for other people or someone else. And so after the primary, he was absolutely overwhelmingly helpful to me and provided me with a lot of information, told me what the needs of the district would be, gave me some ideas about committees to be on. Also gave me really some guidance about just to be a professional on the board and do the right thing. So I want to appreciate him inviting me into his home. He and Joanie both were incredibly gracious to provide me with material and make me, hopefully, become a good board member so I can hit the ground running in January. So congratulations, Mark. I'm so happy that you can spend time with, with Joanie and the rest of your family. You're very lovely people, and I'm looking forward to honoring what you've taught me so far. And on that note, I'm going to have Mr. Kraft swear he'd be in on January 5th.
Really?
Yeah. So I think that that would be a nice, nice tribute.
I like that. That's neat. That's neat.
And I considered her asking me a great honor as long as she doesn't mind my mask on my shoulder.
I'm good with it. I'm a doctor, sir.
Appreciate it.
She is highly intelligent and very receptive. And I'm proud to have her succeed me.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Hey, Mayor, can I say one thing?
Sure.
I just want to thank Maureen for the class she just showed in her statement. That was really above and beyond, really good. Thank you.
Amen to that. Did you have something you want?
Yes, please. Dan, I'm Douglas County Clerk. So just two things. We have this, on the Clerk's website, we have this expense dashboard. And, I mean, it eventually would have gotten done anyway, but I know it got done a lot quicker because of Mark's support and pushing. It's not just the county that has this expense dashboard. It's also a dot com in the city of Omaha. And on our, on our page, the last paragraph says, the Douglas County Clerk's Office would like to thank the Douglas Omaha Technology, excuse me, would like to thank the Douglas Omaha Technology Commission for their assistance in creating the expense dashboard. The Douglas County Clerk Comptroller's Office would also like to thank the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, especially Commissioner Mark Kraft for their support and encouragement of the expense dashboard's implementation. So it's just some good transparency that we do. And it was, Commissioner Kraft was a big champion of it. And the last thing, I got to kind of give you a, it's not really a hard time, so I hope you, but if there's ever a Jurassic Park convention, you grow out your beard and go as Jon Hamm into that thing. You will be, you'll be a hit, I promise you.
So I look like somebody?
The actor, Jon Hamm, that he's the, he's like the mastermind behind Jurassic Park. And I swear, if you just put the hat on and grow out your beard, you would, people would know who you were.
And I did not know that was on your website. It took me two years of fighting to get that up. And I, I'm very pleased that it's there. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we do have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, then I would go ahead and call for the vote.
Can other people speak?
Yes, yes, yes. Excuse me, go ahead.
Louise Humana, 3306 Burt Street. I'd like to relay congratulations to Mr. Kraft for his years of service to the county and the metro community. I remember the first time I met him, I was helping a young guy by the name of Maurice Jones run for city council. And Mr. Kraft welcomed us to his office and gave us some feedback, told us some things about juvenile justice that we didn't know. And I really appreciated that to the point that I thought that he, he's a great representative for, for his district. That's why I am disappointed by his position on the construction, construction project. But that's beside the point. I always felt that he represented me, even though we're very different people. Your, your way about public service made me feel that you're somebody that could represent me, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Other comments? Okay, then I would call for the vote, please. You don't need to, but you should.
I'm voting yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Commissioner Kraft abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes. Commissioner Morgan doing so virtually.
Thank you. Thank you.
We go to item D now. And while I'm reading, I'd like Gail and the family, if they'd come down to the podium. Unless you want to. If you don't want to, that's fine. While they're coming, whereas County Board Chairman Claire Duda was first elected as Commissioner on November 3rd, 1992. And he was sworn in to office on January 7th, 1993. And whereas Mr. Duda was reelected six more times, serving a total of 28 years on the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. And whereas Mr. Duda is a graduate of Omaha North High School High School and Augustana College in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, said he first joined the board as a recommendation, but he stayed for seven terms because he loved doing great things for the community. And whereas throughout his career with Douglas County, Mr. Duda has held leadership roles with the Douglas County Health Center, the Omar Douglas Public Building Commission, the Douglas County Fair, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency. And whereas Mr. Duda played an integral role in several community projects over the years, including the Exarban sale, the 911 merger, and the library agreement. And whereas in the last year on the board, Mr. Duda successfully led the county board through the allocations of $166 million in CARES Act funding in response to the COVID-19 and global pandemic. And whereas colleagues have called Mr. Duda an exceptional leader, loyal and hardworking, and whereas Mr. Duda's passion for service didn't stop at the county board, he's also spent 44 years volunteering for the Ponca Hills Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas Mr. Duda said he is giddy about retirement and spending more time with his wife, Gail, and they're on their family farm in southeast Douglas County, now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that the board hereby honors Commissioner Claire Duda for his longtime public service, extraordinary leadership, and undeniable commitment to Douglas County, and I would ask for a motion to rule. With that, the resolution says it all, in addition to what I said about Commissioner Kraft, you know, the last six months of giving Claire and I a chance to kind of talk off and on, as he's reminisced about sometimes, and he shared some things with me, and that thing, I can share with you, and, you know, Claire, the best I can say is, you know, when you stand somewhere, you're there. And, you know, you're... The thing that I know you understand when I say this is that the things around you may have changed, but you haven't changed, and you've been true to your core, and I appreciate the friendship over the years and wish you well. Sincerely, sincerely. With that, I'll take it over Claire Wyves to see if anybody wants to speak. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, the resolution didn't mention anything about the 200 and some goats. But Claire has been a wonderful county commissioner from day one, and I could spend half an hour talking about his attributes, but I'm going to let everybody else do that. Thank you.
Okay, looking, Commissioner Bor.
Well, Claire and I began our relationship like I did with all the Republicans that I'd run into on the county board, and that was that I kind of would figuratively punch them once in a while. And over time, as I discovered with Kathy McAllister and Kyle Hutchings and a host of other solid, solid, good-thinking Republicans, he became one of those as Commissioner Borgson. People that you can trust and people whose word is good, who understands government and understands the compassion that's necessary to make things really work and be better in our community. And his being a farmer, I think, really added another dimension, because it, people who work with their hands and make things grow and feed others and take care of all those goats and so forth. My family was farmers. They lost their farms that they had, my dad's grandfather had homesteaded during the Homestead Act. They came down from Canada. They were Irish immigrants, put on a famine ship and sent over. Anyway, they lost the farms and they went to Southern California to be, try to make a living, and that's why I was born in Los Angeles. So, I have a real affinity for farmers. I've got cousins who farm today, and it brings a real sensibility and understanding of how things should be. So, and his lovely wife, Gail, is just a real partner, there's no doubt about it. And I always follow the orders. When I call their house, I do repeat the phone number twice. But I want to congratulate you, Claire, on a really, an incredible career, one that the Duda family is known for service, and you followed in your father's footsteps, and I know your brother Walt real well, and you're people of character. So, I congratulate you, and I think I'll probably get a picture of you, the tail end of your motorcycle going down the highway. So, there you go. Congratulations, and I wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Borgson?
Okay, I can get through this. I'm not sure, but congratulations, Claire, on olive, the 28 years of service. When I was reading the resolution and last night thinking over the years, we've had our ups and downs, but the amazing thing about you is that we're able to walk back into each other's office.
Absolutely.
And have a conversation, a civil conversation, about where we stood on an issue and how that olive branch needed to be extended so that we could go on and carry the work of the county for the people. You were a statesman, Claire. You're a great leader. You have done amazing things at the Health Center, and if that's one thing that I will leave you with is that I follow your footsteps in that for you. You started the foundation. It's on good footing. It's a wonderful place, serving the people that we should be serving, and I thank you for that. But most of all, your passion and compassion about county on every level that there is. It doesn't matter if it's routine issues or if it's an extraordinary issue. You do it with passion, you do it with commitment, and you do it with compassion. I will miss you. I value our friendship and all that we've been through, which again, has made it a stronger friendship. And I appreciate you, I appreciate your family. I've gotten to know them. Little Joseph.
Who is on TV.
Oh, okay. Hi, Joseph!
Active service in the Army out in Colorado, watching.
He was actually the first Duda child that I met, and he was just a little guy, little dude, and the last time he was here, it was like, wow, he's a really big dude. And proud of him, and thank you for your service. But really, your dad has done wonderful job, not only here at the county, for our family at the county, but for his own family, and I can see that in all of you. And I thank you for giving him to us for all these years, and Claire, enjoy really those goats.
In my mind, I'm giving you a really big hug right now. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's what I miss doing.
Claire, I'd like to say something if I could.
Go ahead.
Want to really express my thank you for your public service, and I know this year hasn't been the easiest one as chairperson, but you've done and tried to do and have done a very, very good job. I wish you and Gail the best, and I have a favorite ass of Gail. I know that Claire is looking very forward to his motorcycle trip to Alaska.
Yay!
And I just want to be sure you don't leave in the next week or so. And make sure you're very careful and enjoy your time because you certainly deserve it. And lastly, I just want to say that I have tremendous respect for the passion that you have in running the trustees meetings for a long while, and now Mary Ann, but just your tremendous passion about that important place in our community, and most importantly, the people there. I really didn't know of that, you know, serving as a member of the Board of Trustees with you. As a citizen, I'm just very appreciative of your leadership there and always doing the right thing for the right reasons. So, I wish you the best and health and everything to your family, and enjoy your time and take care of the goats.
Very good. Thank you, PJ.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Dan. Before I, I'll ask family to go last. Nope, you can go, I'm going to ask family to go first.
Dan Ash County Clerk. So, yeah, Chris Bourgson hit it on the head with the Health Center. I mean, that's kind of one of the first things I think of when it comes to you, and of course, it's been, I'm on the foundation now, and it's been great getting to know Gail better as well. So, one story, I'll remember, I wasn't there for it, but the foundation, this was maybe 2010 to 2012, I feel like, and the foundation had a volunteer luncheon, and Tom took Ellen with her to it. And so, when they got back, I, of course, said, "Oh, how was it?" Like, "Well, Claire saved someone's life." And I was like, "What?" And there was a gal who was choking, and Claire just walked over and just like, "I don't know what you did, you just hit her in the back once," and it came right up, and... But Ellen was like, "Wow, it was awesome." She says, she could see someone was saying something to you, and you could tell you weren't paying attention, but you had like, kind of a concerned look on your face, and then all of a sudden, you got up, and everyone was like, "What's going on?" And then you, anyway, so I thought that was a really cool story about you. And then, I know I told Commissioner Kraft I didn't want to give him a hard time, I definitely want to give you a hard time, so, so I'm going to set this up with a fictitious scenario. Let's just say the federal government kidnaps me and says, "There's a matter of national security. Somebody got stolen, you need to steal it back. Discreteness is of utmost importance. We've got four people that are going to help you out." And they take me in a room, and you're one of the four people. The first thing I'm doing is I'm looking at those other three people, and I'm saying, "Nobody say or do anything to make this guy laugh, because they're going to hear us from two miles away if he starts laughing."
PJ.
Thank you. So, if the family would like to come, if they would like to say, oh, Patrick, go ahead.
I wasn't going to say anything, but, you know, none of the commissioners have made me cry in 28 years, so I hopefully get through this one. But I just wanted to say on behalf of staff, thank you to both of you for all of your support and your commitment to service. You know, time really slips away from you, you know? It's weeks and then turns into months and then years, and before you know it, you know, you're at 12 years for Mark and 28 years for Claire, and I'll be at my 28th year in May, so... It's amazing how it gets away from you, and what you're left with are your relationships and your accomplishments and your integrity, and you've kept your integrity all of this time. And again, we, as staff, appreciate all of your support and commitment to service. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
With that, before they come up, two more points I'd make, and this can be, this can be said for Mark and Claire, but I'll say it now. I heard this term in Washington, and you hear it a lot. It says that some people are show horses and some people are workhorses, and I can say this for both of these men, they have been workhorses here for us, and the most you can ask when somebody comes is that they leave you in a better position than when they came, and it's undeniably that we're in a better position in every way. And with that, if anybody from the family would like to say anything, and if they wouldn't, there's no rush, I know.
Yes, this is Anne. I guess I got elected as the family to speak. This morning, getting ready, I realized I was seven when Dad first got elected and sworn in, and he's already gone, but my seven-year-old is here for his first meeting today. It's been fun getting to learn and meet all of you guys and to see what happens in the county and how it's been passed on to all of the kids. I know, I mean, I know Erica, and I know PJ's daughter as well. I've gotten to meet both of them, and this has been fun, and thank you all, and thank you, Dad.
Thank you.
This young lady was around the courthouse and the offices and stuff, and I saw her interest in politics, and we're not exactly the same stripe, but I'm so impressed with the way she handles herself, just like today, that I said, "I'm going to run your campaign for governor, and Duda for governor." So, I'm with you, okay?
Well, thank you. It's no longer Duda, it's now Schibel Hofer, which will not get on the sign very well.
We're going to have to raise a lot of money for those big signs.
Members of the, well, first of all, chairman and members of the chairperson and members of the commissioners, my name is Ben Gray. My address is 1819 Farnham, LC1. I just want to take the opportunity to do a couple of things real quick, because, you know, we got city council today, so I want to say my piece before I get out of here. And the first thing I want to do, you know, we talked about the Juvenile Justice Center, and I'm going to get to that in just a minute, because I'm supportive of it, I'm supportive of the $10 million additional. I think we need to get it done. Stay on this one. Okay, I'm sorry. I ain't going to get kicked out, am I? Let me just say to both, Claire and Mark, I just want to thank you for your courage, and I just want to thank you for your leadership, because you all have been, you all have been kind of mentors to me in a way, first getting here and being on the building commission and others, but more importantly, I think it's important to recognize, you know, people who take a stand, sometimes it's not as elected officials, it's not easy to take a stand when you feel like the majority of people are opposed to you, but when you know what you're doing is the right thing to do, and you stand up and do it in the face of all of those, in the face of people who may not agree with you, that's kind of what leadership is about. And I just wanted to take the opportunity, and Claire, we served on the building commission together for a couple of years, and I gave you grief the whole time, but I loved it the whole time as well. But I just wanted, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you all for your courage. And Mark, you know, I go back to the days of Leo, your dad. So, it has been really interesting and fun to watch you all develop and grow and continue to be the kinds of leaders that we need to have in Douglas County. Thank you all, I appreciate it very much. I appreciate your service. You're going to be sorely missed. I'm going to miss the rides down North 30th Street in your brother's nice new vehicles and so forth, but I enjoyed, I enjoyed it, and I enjoyed working with you all, and you will sorely be missed down here, especially by me. It is I who should be thanking you. I've felt like a kid in a candy shop for 28 years here. Getting to be a part of this, it's such an amazing thing, and I am so lucky, and I've been so lucky for so long. I should be thanking you, and I do. I thank you sincerely for allowing me to do this and present.
Claire, I don't know if you remember this or not, but when I was 40, I had a heart attack and had a very close experience with death, and the city council met shortly afterwards, I've told this story, they met shortly afterwards and wished me a speedy recovery, and it passed five to two. So, you're lucky to get a unanimous support here.
Yes, indeed, indeed. Oh, thank you.
No, we, we still need to vote.
Yeah, that's, I don't think I want to go there. I really would like to just kind of adjourn the meeting right now and then, but...
PJ, give me a thumbs up if you mean to vote yes.
Voting yes.
Okay, there we go. Motion passes. Commissioner Duda abstaining, all others voting yes. Commissioner Morgan doing so virtually.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. And thank you so much. Would anybody like to address this board on anything not on the agenda? If so, this is the opportunity to do so. Good morning again.
Hi. I'm Dr. John Else, consultant with the, a volunteer consultant with New Life Family Alliance, and with me today is the first, oh, I'm sorry. Can I get closer?
Yes, that helps.
Okay, sorry. Dr. John Else, volunteer consultant with New Life Family Alliance, and with me today is Aban Law, New Life Family Alliance's first full-time executive director. Aban is a full-time, a former attorney in South Sudan, as well as a counselor to the National Legislature and an advisor in drafting legislation. He's been in the United States now for 20 years, working mainly in security and in manufacturing kinds of positions. manufacturing kinds of positions. We're happy to have him on in this position. We just pledged as we started this meeting and referred to the life, liberty and justice We've made tremendous progress toward that goal and continue, but continue to fall short. And I appreciate what you said, Claire, about the achievements of Douglas County. About seven or eight weeks ago, I testified before you and I appreciated your responsiveness. One of the issues I raised was the failure of the board to include mortgages along with rentals in your CARES program. I received several suggestions for opportunities to pay mortgages, including the Nebraska Housing Development Association led by Mr. Kavanaugh's nephew, Matthew. We submitted 12 applications and all 12 were denied for good reason because the organization had only had enough funding to be able to address mortgages that were in the process of foreclosure. So they couldn't address regular mortgage payments. Other agencies that we contacted did not respond at all. Eight of those 12 homeowners had Habitat for Humanities houses. And recently Habitat for Humanities received some money and I'm not sure whether they raised that or whether that was some CARE money that was diverted there later. But they took, covered eight, all eight of those 12 mortgages. We had four left that we had no sources to help. I've talked with a couple of commissioners and when I asked for an explanation for the exclusion of mortgages, was told that you all were told that mortgages are too complex, that there were often multiple mortgage holders. None of the 12 mortgages that we dealt with had multiple mortgage holders. I have no idea where that information came from, but I would strongly like to know. And I'd also like to know whether anybody did research on that claim. Because I've talked with other, with mortgage companies and they don't know of those other than second mortgages and things like that. If it's a small percentage, I urged the commission in using its $10 million that's left over, as well as in the 2021 program, which is surely going to be coming forward, that you simply limit the mortgage assistance to those with only one mortgage source. That's a reasonable criteria for any program. These mortgage holders are suffering terribly, the same as all of our citizens who've lost jobs, had reduced hours or had to leave work to care for young children or involved in virtual learning. They, these have taken the initiative for owning their own homes. And they should not be penalized for that initiative. They're low-income families and they need help. And I hope that you will reconsider that policy immediately. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, John.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Aban Law. My address is 3610 Dodge Street, suite number 204. I come here today and first of all, I'm lucky to attend the honoring of two, I said, heroes of Douglas County. I used to see them on TV and I'm here to meet them in person, Claire and Mark. And this is the first time also for me and maybe anyone from my community, maybe you, you never met anyone from South Sudan who's attended the Douglas County Board. And I thank our consultant, Dr. John, because since he joined us and he's the one leading us and tried to teach us a lot of things about the American life. Why I'm talking here today, most of my community, most of them, they'll be sleeping now because most of them, they work night. They work in meat packaging. They work in every job being offered to them because they want to be sufficient and they want to be people who contribute to this, this community and this city. We are maybe the most community affected by the COVID-19. And we kind of be relieved when we hear that there is the CARE Act fund. But it was when our, when our people, they go and they apply, most of the time they get denied because there is a lot, the bar is high, a lot of string. And I'm lucky Joe was here and Commissioner Mike asking about, has been any string on that act when it was passed by the Congress? And there is no. But some people down the road, they decided to put a lot of string on that money. So the money will not go to the people who actually the Congress intended to go to them. And I don't know what the board will feel if they have leftover money and they try to do construction with it. Is it the construction? It's more important than the human life. Those people who supposed to be, to be helped, that are taxpayers and there are people who actually, they're supposed to go back to work tomorrow so they can contribute to the economy more. But the way it is, even, I ask myself, is it really this call, Care Act? Or maybe it's a self-act, like self-care act? Because it did not go to anybody. When we came here, one of the things we've been hearing a lot, like you have to be sufficient and you have to stand on your feet and you have to realize the American dream, which is buying a house. Because this is the fundamental thing, then you will, you will pass to your kids that you are from here. I myself, I have four kids. Three of them, they've been born in Omaha here and they're not going anywhere. And I have a mortgage. Majority of my people, they have a mortgage. They've been affected by the, by the COVID-19 because most of them, they work in the most places that is infested by the COVID-19. And until anyone be in our shoes, then we'll know that like, what it is to be affected the whole house with the COVID-19. And you don't have anything to rely on it because since we came here, we rely on paycheck to paycheck because this is the job it been offered to us. So I'm here joining John. If the board can consider our mortgages, because if it is just, the money is going just for the rental, that's mean like, like is the board is saying like, you know, those who are on mortgage that are immune from this disease, from this disease, simply like that. Like, okay, you are on mortgage, you are immune. But since we know that this is a pandemic and affected everybody and especially those who are working in a places who are very infested. And maybe on the news, you guys, you heard before about how even some meat packaging that are trying even to, to suppress the number of the people who are on COVID because they do like oneration. So that cannot affect their operation and it's a lot of, in a lot of places. So just, I'm here today on behalf of my community just to consider our situation and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak during citizen comment? Good morning.
It is still morning, I guess. I'm Sharon Martin. I live at 1101 Jackson Street. And I think that was the most important voice we could possibly hear today. I worked with several groups during the two years of contentious opposition to the co-located jail. And I won't address that right now because what I really came here for this morning was when I heard there was going to be additional requests because of the findings that were in the Chin Report and reported from people who had opposition to the plan, that the CARES Act money would be used for this cause. Now, I went back to the government's documents concerning the CARES Act. And I read every single word of it, which is typical for what I do when I address something. The CARES Act money was specifically allocated to provide fast, direct economic assistance for American workers and families, small businesses, and to preserve jobs for American industries. The U.S. Treasury Department has taken unprecedented steps to preserve jobs in industries that were impacted by COVID-19 outbreak, to assist businesses applying for payroll support to enable continued payment of employee wages, benefits and loans pursuant to the coronavirus aid relief and economic security, which is the CARES Act. It's for employers of all sizes that face closure orders or suffer economic hardship due to COVID-19 and incentivized to keep employees on payroll through December 31st, It would appear to be fraudulent to use CARES Act money specifically allocated to provide fast, direct economic assistance for American workers and families, like we just heard addressed in this forum, small businesses and to preserve jobs for American industries to try to salvage a flawed juvenile justice plan pushed through an approval process for politically questionable purposes. I applaud the work that was quoted for the people on this board, but that plan was passed with little collaboration with the current youth center program administrators and staff. There was total rejection of all alternative research-based proposals and total dismissal of the oppositional voices of doctors, lawyers, judges, parents, juveniles, teachers and stakeholders concerned with the rush to approve a risky, unproven building decision with many potential repercussions flagged in the Chin Study, supported by this group. I am an objective individual and I'm sure every one of you are great people, but I have voted for the people on this council, really not knowing exactly how much power eight people can have to pass something so detrimental to so many. And look, there's not many people here, not many people know what you do. There's not transparency. I've seen that in the last two years that I've been involved. I have seen federal money dispersed like this and it rarely gets to the people like we just heard about. They're used as victims to promote things that don't get the money to who it was there for. I think that you're trusted to follow the dictates of this, not look for loopholes to use the money for things that have not been supported by the public.
Thank you. I would say there are things on the agenda. This is supposed to be for things not on the agenda. If you're going to talk about something on the agenda, I'm going to ask you to wait until it comes up on the agenda.
Can I talk before you just go point at me like that, please? For Pete's sake. So as you point out.
Mr. Wilson, can you state your name?
My name is Tyler Wilson. My address is 3860 Dodge Street. As you so clearly pointed out, I'm going to speak twice today, one for citizen comment and one for your $10 million fiasco that you're trying to ram through. Okay? Are we clear on that? I am a small business owner here in the city of Omaha. I won't discuss what my business is or the name of that because my personal political beliefs are separate from my business. But with that, the federal government allocated money for paycheck protection and disaster relief grants to the SBA and things like that, which was fantastic and great. Unfortunately, my business was not large enough with employees for some of those requirements on the federal level, which is fine. We're doing decently well. But thanks to the economic impact of the lack of tourism in the city of Omaha, myself, like many other businesses in this city are suffering. And I find it very disheartening that we can spend almost 45 minutes discussing the retirement of two county commissioners and we spend more time discussing that than we do discussing allocating $36 million that's left over from the CARES Act. So why don't we start talking about what to do with that $36 million in putting that towards small businesses, furthering the rental assistance, furthering the utility assistance and helping the people in this city that need that help the most? Because I'm going to tell you this, a construction project doesn't need that help. And that still accounts for $26 million of money that's getting swept into the general fund that's probably going to get spent on more useless things like this board likes to do. It'll probably get put towards a pay raise or some frivolous expense like that. So let's, I would encourage you now today to voice your opinion in allocating that $36 million to continuing the COVID-19 relief because we know the federal government isn't going to come out with a second stimulus package for a while because it's the federal government and they take their sweet time. You as a local municipality and you as a local government, you could act far more quickly than the federal government. And I would encourage you to take that $36 million and I would encourage you to act on that in a way that benefits all citizens of Douglas County, not just a select few.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak under citizen comments?
Larry Stewart, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Since this is officially the last meeting of a couple of members here today, my comments we're going to start with, we also maybe have a new set of members coming in. So maybe we should talk about new rules. New rules such as clarifying, and this is a question. New rules such as clarifying, and this is a question. If I was a new person coming off the street, would I understand that I may or may not get to comment on item seven B1? It does not say public hearing. And it is on the agenda, so I shouldn't be talking about it now. Sometimes I'm shut off or being out of order. Just because it's your last meeting doesn't mean you shouldn't shut off other people that are out of order. My final comment on this is going to be this. I respect all the years that you did serve, and Mr. Kraft. I do not necessarily respect everything that you did. So I don't necessarily have to sign on to the resolution for that. And in relation to items, this last item often gets put, this type of thing gets put to the very last. There's not enough people here to hear. They get tired of waiting, so they leave. They can't understand because you've got your mask on. And don't do that. My green light is still on.
If you think the meeting's going too long.
This is Citizen Comments, sir. Just because it's your last meeting. Okay? So what I'm saying is, I protest that you are using the last meeting, yourself and Mr. Kraft, to impose another resolution, regulation, law, and then run off into the shadows and leave us holding the bag. I think this body should vote no on this resolution. Because I'm not real certain, after all this time I've spent here, that I will actually get to comment on that item. It may very well come up as an emergency thing, slam damn thank you, man, and we're out of here. Don't do that.
Thank you. Other comments about how long our meeting is going on?
No. Luis Jimenez, thirty-three oh six Birch Street. Mr. Duda, I want to thank you for your service to the county. I think you did a fine job this year, being the PO. I always said no bones about it. We're going to get through this meeting. And we came out okay every time. Anyway, I wanted to speak about your rules of order. They're, they're not on the agenda, and they're going to be coming up in January. There are some people that hold these rules in contempt. Seems like they switch their mind every week about what they mean. And that's unfortunate because that's misinformation. They find power in that for whatever reason. But I do understand your rules, especially when they're laid out and completely explained. The last few years, I've said incorporate Robert's Rules of Order to your rules of order. It's a thick book about like that. And doesn't mean that you have to incorporate the whole book. Incorporate what is, what is useful to your meetings as being a political subdivision of Nebraska. I've seen frustrations from the commissioners and the public about how these decisions are made during meetings. So one thing I would say that suggests that if you're not going to look at Robert's Rules of Order, you might want to look at how the city conducts its meeting. They hold over items from week to week so that once it's on the agenda, depending on what it is, it needs to be considered for a certain amount of time. The resolutions that you, you put on your agenda are often act on, acted on within a matter of, of days. And that's okay. But it, it might not be okay for everything. So I suggest that when certain items are on your agenda, especially if they're expenditures, if they're not emergency allocations, to hold them over for a week or so. Oftentimes, a fortnight is good. That's two weeks. And let's see here, what other items are not on your agenda? I think that's it. Thanks.
Anybody else wishing to speak under Citizen Comments?
Mr. Chair, I would like to, actually. And I promise I'll keep it less than 45 seconds. So I was, Dan Ash, County Clerk. I was gone November 10th when we passed the resolution for Sheriff Dunning. And just wanted to express my appreciation to him. And I think a underrated or kind of unknown thing about him is all the work he's done towards fighting human trafficking. And he has this quote that the World Herald quoted him on in a, in a January 8th editorial this year. Douglas County Sheriff Tim Dunning has rightly observed, "Research has shown," and this is his quote, "Research has shown that it's easier for law enforcement to build trust with victims and obtain information for prosecution when victims feel safe and respected. We have made progress through educating our law enforcement community to recognize that the old model of prosecuting human trafficking cases by treating victims as criminal defendants in order to leverage them and to force cooperation against their traffickers is ineffective. It also misunderstands the coercive nature of the victimization that occurs in human trafficking." So I just want to thank him for his years of service as sheriff and for joining the fight in that important cause.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cook. Appreciate that. All right. Well, I think at this point, then, I would like to go ahead and turn to our big item. This is my last meeting. Watch out. I get to say what I want. And I got a lot to say. This has been a very painful process to get us to this point. I took my mask off because there's nobody within eight feet of me, and I'm running this meeting. This has been a very painful process. It didn't have to be. Early on in this process, we've known for many years, all of us have known how badly the courthouse needed to be expanded. Everybody's recognized that for a long time. Difficult to do. Big change. It's got to be painful. You can't make changes like that without being painful. But early on in the process, one commissioner figured out how much publicity he could get by fighting this, by stirring the, the waters, by stirring the mud. This commissioner, and I'm talking about Commissioner Kavanaugh. This is my last meeting. I can say what I want. The only core belief I have ever seen demonstrated has been an insatiable desire for attention. And that seems to be behind everything in my mind. The longer this project lingers on, the more publicity he gets. When I told a couple of reporters that I was going to come forward with a plan to try to finally wrap this project up, make it whole, they said, oh, we got to go to Commissioner Kavanaugh and get his response. This has turned into just a fountain of free publicity for him. So of course, he never will want to see us resolve this, get it built, move on. He's gotten so much free publicity out of this, I hear he's thinking about running for mayor. And I dare say it's based on this project, on the publicity he has received from this project. I'm telling you things I believe. I don't know these factually. I don't know for sure that after the MUD Board two years ago came to us and said, "We're interested in selling our building. Are you interested in buying?" And we said yes. And things were flowing along smoothly. And then suddenly, MUD said, "Oh, no, we changed our mind. We don't want to sell you this building." I believe they were lobbied to change their mind and pull the rug out from under the county. So the county board meets an executive session to say, "What do we do? We can't build here. Let's try going across the street. We know we don't want to be close to the courthouse. Let's try going across the street, see if we can acquire this property." I see Mr. Perrin sitting in the back of the room. He's the only one who knows what commissioner went to him ahead of time to divulge this confidential information that the county was trying to acquire his property without being forward that it's the county. We know somebody did. He sent us a letter the morning he was to get the offer saying, "I know this is the county. You can't fool me. I think I know who divulged that confidential information. I can't prove it." But I believe that. I know that he was down in the legislature trying to get the authority for the building commission to issue bonds. I know he was trying to get that stripped while at the same time he's upstairs telling the building commission, "Pass these bonds. This is why my father created the building commission." The longer this drags on, the more free publicity he gets. And so he has a vested interest in dragging this out as long as possible. If the county board would ever get their act together and say, "This is it, we're done," his issue goes away. I'll guarantee he'll bring it back next year. He's going to try to keep this alive as long as possible. This is a free publicity gravy train for him. Of course, he wants to keep it alive as long as possible. But it's made life pretty difficult for those of us that are actually trying to address this very serious need. We all acknowledge the need. We all have given lip service to saying, "Yeah, we know the courthouse has got to be expanded." But the message has been hijacked and through misdirection. We're hearing comments this morning about kiddie jail. Does everybody realize that 80% of this project is the courthouse annex? If you go out in the community, they're all going to think it's this Gulog or kiddie jail or whatever derogatory term we can use to put this down, to feed on people's fears. We got a president who does this, too. To say, "Oh, you don't want those kids down here. Oh, no, they aren't our kids. Those are bad kids. Stay away from them. Trouble, trouble." Who am I, a conservative Republican, to be saying the community needs to embrace these kids? The liberal judge, the liberal lawyer should be out at the forefront of juvenile justice reform, not the biggest impediment that we can get. I was a little disappointed, I've got to say. When we went with the public-private partnership, I envisioned there would be more private support than there was. But wow, this thing turned so controversial so fast that it scared any potential money away. A self-fulfilling prophecy that this isn't going to work out well. I would plead with this board to go along and complete the project. We have the opportunity today. What we are asking for today is a total of $10 million. About 3.6 of that is to bring us up to the latest ASHRAE standards. The same things we have done in this building, the Civic Center. We want to bring it up to the same standards as our other buildings. Kind of a no-brainer. If we really want a courthouse annex, don't we want it built to the latest ASHRAE standards? That's not what in, is in there because this has dragged on for almost two years. And then we also now have a budget shortfall because, as I just mentioned, this has dragged on for two years. Inflation's been going at about 3% a year for the average cost of construction in the Midwest. We're looking at all the data we can to come up with the best figures we can. This 20 months of delays figures out to about $7 million. It would be interesting to ask, you know, the lawsuit that got filed, one more roadblock put up in our way. I love this part where Commissioner Kavanaugh kept warning us for weeks when the bond issue was coming. "It's not over yet. It's not over yet. Stay tuned." And then at the 11th hour, there's a lawsuit filed, and we can't claim that we can't sell the bonds because there's a lawsuit filed. And when he's informed that he had a fiduciary responsibility to tell the county if he knew that this lawsuit was going to be filed, Commissioner Kavanaugh said, "Oh, no, I had no idea that my buddies were filing this lawsuit." It would be interesting to ask for a show of hands of how many people in this room believe him that he had no idea this lawsuit was coming? This has been very frustrating. The lawsuit itself costs us $3 million in interest. It went from 3.05% to 3.2%. Costs us over $260,000 out of pocket for the, the rating agencies and everything. It costs us over $3 million just the lawsuit, just in interest, quantifiable expenses. I'm glad he knew nothing about it, had no idea that that was going to be filed because otherwise that wouldn't look good for the county. Now we have the effects of inflation. And that makes up about $7 million. I think that the $120 million figure that was given to us a couple of years ago of what this complex would cost was pretty accurate at that time. But those same figures can't hold up forever. You can't come back years later and say, "Now I want it." You can't go make a deal to buy a car and then come back in five years and say, "Okay, now I want to, I want to follow through on that." Things change. We know that we have inflation at work. This is a very unusual time in the history of the county. We've got money available. I have tried to be very clear, as this conversation has gone along, of the difference between CARES Act funding and general fund dollars. This board voted unanimously two months ago to transfer $26.5 million of CARES Act funds to the county's general fund. That is old news. That's not on the agenda. If somebody, commissioners included, has heartburn with that and now thinks it's money laundering, well, look at ourselves. We did that. We did that months ago. Nobody goes to Omaha and says, "We're 60 million. You got 60 million in CARES Act funding. How much of that is going to Brannade? How much of that is going to food?" No, it goes into their general fund to use, as they see fit, no strings attached. We put $26.5 million into the county's general fund a couple of months ago on a unanimous vote. Okay, my point is, as we go through the discussion today, what is on the agenda is not putting CARES Act dollars into this building. It is putting general reserve funds into this building. If anybody, commissioners included, doesn't think this belongs in our general fund, then they should have made that argument a couple of months ago before we put it in there and not come along now and say, "Oh, I didn't know what I was doing." It's in there. This board put it in there unanimously. Anybody that brings up CARES Act funding during this discussion today, I am going to declare that they are off topic because we are not talking about CARES Act funding. We have used intentionally misleading statements throughout this process just to get some good soundbites. And it's going on again now. These are not CARES Act dollars. And I am not going to allow discussion that pretends that they are because they're not. Okay. With that, Commissioner Kraft. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Kraft. And second by Commissioner Rogers to approve item B1, resolution allocating $10 million from the county's general fund reserve to Douglas County Justice Center construction project. As, as soon as things settle down here, we'll turn to you, Commissioner Kraft. Okay, things settle down here, Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. We're making a major investment. We're making a major investment, and it's important to do this right. Because of COVID, building standards have changed. Because of the frivolous lawsuit that we knew was going to fail, because we knew we were within the law, we had inflation. Because of that same frivolous lawsuit, we had two years' delay in providing the services we need to provide to the young people that we have been developing and are implementing now, but would be implemented better in what they call a trauma-informed. now, but would be implemented better in what they call a trauma-informed environment. We are working with Boystown. Today, item D, I think it was item D in the consent agenda, was an amendment to a contract we had with Boystown to work on some of this preventative care we're having. It is important to do this right because of the courthouse needs, because of the community needs, because of the needs of the youth and the family. The family will have one place to go instead of three. They will have one source of information for help instead of three, four, or five. This is a vital part of what we're bringing to the community. This is not for a select few, as somebody said. This is for all of us because it affects all of us, and it affects us long-term. It affects youth going into the system. We keep them out of the system. And it affects their parents, and it'll eventually affect keeping people out of the Douglas County correctional facilities as adults. We are working at this from the roots up, not from the top down. Trickle-down doesn't work in any effect. But feeding the roots and taking care of the roots of the plant or the roots of the family is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just also want to make sure that there's clarification during this conversation. As you pointed out, the CARES Act conversation, also that this is not going to the juvenile detention center. This is for the expansion of the courthouse. There are three very distinct buildings going on for this project as a whole, and today what we're talking about is the expansion of the courthouse, which again was unanimously supported by this board.
Correct. I believe the HVAC is for the whole facility, but everything else in there is exclusively for the courthouse annex. Thank you for clarifying that. Further comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Commissioner Duda's sad super-spreader display here without a mask is not only disrespectful and bad public hygiene. I'd ask people to wear masks here because there's a pandemic on and the best science is it prevents the spread of the disease. It's just good public hygiene. But his wild accusations are only consistent in one thing. They are all untrue. And the fact is, we're here at the 11th hour without any hearings, without a plan that anybody's had a chance to see, so that he and his lame duck associate can employ their last gasp to put $10 million behind a failing project that is largely unnecessary as far as the kids' jail portion goes, has no public support, and indeed has cost him his seat on this board because the voters overwhelmingly repudiated his position on this very topic. The sad part is, he thinks it's important to use untruths to sell what is essentially a grab of money from the COVID CARES relief fund to a construction project that we said long ago would run far in excess of the $120 million originally planned. A construction project that the only objectionable part, really, is the kids' jail that he completely misrepresents as a courthouse. Nobody opposed the courthouse expansion. It's the kids' jail, and he knows that. So using relief money at the height of a pandemic to prop up a behind-the-close-door concocted construction project is really kind of sad, and I'm sorry to see him go out like this. But he finds it necessary to engage in personal attacks, untruths, and wild arm-winging, yelling, maskless, super-spreader events to try to get people to ignore the fact of what's going on here. It's during the height of a pandemic. He's going to take $10 million away from the people who need it. That's people who need rent. That's people who need utilities. That's people who need food.
You're off-topic.
Small businesses that need support.
These are not CARES Act dollars. You're off-topic.
And now he's trying to shut down the discussion of exactly what he's doing so that the people out there won't be aware of the fact that this is a money laundering transfer of $10 million from a relief fund to a construction project without any discussion. No one's seen any plans. There have been no committee hearings. He has this under his administrative services committee, which has held no hearings on this, and it's popped up at the last minute. The $26 million that we transferred into the general fund wasn't transferred into the general fund with any discussion of a construction project. There were lots of discussions and have been and will be after Commissioner Duda's gone, plans for taking that $26 million and the other $10 million and giving it to the people impacted by the pandemic that's raging. We need to help people. We need to take the money that Washington sent here to help people and deliver it. The first of the year, when we come back, we will revisit this issue and correct what I think has been concocted behind closed doors here today as a basic theft of relief funds for a construction project.
You're off-topic.
I'm sad to see Mr. Duda go out like this. I am unfortunately subjected to his untrue allegations over and over, which are too many to even respond to. But I think that ultimately the new board will see a way forward to actually provide help to the people of our community struggling with the COVID-19 pandemic in 2021. So I'd like to thank them and say, "Hang in there. Help is on its way."
The misdirection that has gone on throughout this process is a big part of why so few people in the public really understand what we're doing. We have a master of misdirection here who only talks about the kiddie jail and the gulag and about CARES Act funding. These aren't CARES Act funds. I tried to clarify that at the beginning. I tried to show why they're not. They're not. But it sure makes good soundbites to pretend they are, so let's not let the truth interfere with a good story. Commissioner Boil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say this, and the opponents, I don't want them to be upset, but I am going to vote for this expenditure, and the reason is that I will be on the prevailing side so that when the new board with the people who were elected to represent their citizens in two of the districts, county board districts, they will be able to vote. And so it's with that notice that I believe HDR and KEYWIT should not do anything substantial between now and then, which is, I think, the 12th of January, so that we will discuss this very publicly. And I've got a lot of notes, and one of the things that really put me on this side big time, and it's nothing personal, these are not personal attacks that I'm making, but they're facts. Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Kavanaugh, and myself, because of the open meetings law primarily and other reasons, we're not involved in making this decision to spend $10 million on this project. And I'm not even sure exactly what it goes for, but I could say what it is and what caused it. But in any event, we were really not informed, and so we were asked to come to, I was asked to come to the chair's office, Mr. Duda, and also Ms. Borges was there, and they explained what it was. But the deal was done. The deal was done. And I have explained to my fellow commissioners that in years past and with this past, this event that just occurred now on this project, I don't appreciate being patted on the head. Here's the project. Now go away and vote yes. I don't appreciate it. And I don't really know that the money is, I know, I guess I can read what it's for, and I'm sure it'll go to the construction project, but I'm not exactly sure. So I'm going to vote yes so that I can bring it back, and the new members and the members who are still here will make a decision about whether or not we proceed with that. And the only other point I want to make, and I hope it's germane because I think it is, I cannot ignore the misery and the pain that people are experiencing in Omaha and around the United States. I see mothers with children getting evicted at the end of this month. All the government aid comes to an end, and it hasn't been very much. And I know that, you know, people want to blame one group or the other, but I'll tell you what. Mitch McConnell is a devil. He is an absolute devil. The work of the legislation sitting on his desk that he holds up, which he can legally do but he shouldn't do, is causing so much pain and anguish for citizens. And I would be predisposed to spend every dime of that money that was put into the general fund that came from CARES money for help for people, including mortgages, including food, including clothing, shelter for people. It is an absolute crisis, and we are very fortunate to be in the situation that we are in this room for the most part. I can't speak for everyone, but we seem to be surviving somehow, and we're very fortunate that we are. My wife came from a very large family. She was the eldest of 12, and nine members have had a brush with COVID. I've had three grandchildren that have come down with it. They've lost their taste and smell and things, but nobody has had the terrible agony of someone dying in the hospital on a ventilator. Our family has avoided that, and I hope that all of you are avoiding it. I hope that it will stop because there are so many people that are dying. I have good friends, mostly through my daughter-in-law, Mary Boyle, and others, who have friends who are nurses at UNMC, and they talk about what they're going through. I just, our health people are just being wrung through a wringer. So in any event, I'm going to try to, I'm going to bring this back up. The red light's on. I'm going to try to bring this back up in early January. There will be a guarantee, kind of a guarantee thing. I talked to Bruce at HDR. There is some kind of a guarantee of what the cost will be of the project. That should come time, maybe around December 17th, so that'll give us something. And hopefully, we'll come back with a plan of some sort to do something that makes sense. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Further comments from the board? Okay, I would open this up then to the public.
I'd like to make a comment, Claire.
Louise, excuse me one second. I'm going to let PJ go first. Go ahead, Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, first of all, I wish I was present at your meeting. However, I am quarantined because I was near someone last week, and the doctor said I shouldn't have the test till tomorrow morning, so I didn't want to rush that, followed Dr. Bailey's instructions. So I am quarantined as of right now. I want to make certain that everyone understands we're talking about the Hall of Justice only, and I was at the news conference on Friday and asked some questions there, and that's what this is about, and that's why the county attorney, public defender, and some others spoke at that meeting. And we do not, as Commissioner Boyle just said, have a firm number. I asked that question, is this number firmed up? He said, "Not at this time, but it should be toward the end of December, and maybe it is going to be the 17th." But I think that's very important for us to have because we don't know if $10 million for the Hall of Justice is that final number with changes to the lobby and some stairwells, some other things now because of COVID, is some of that cost plus what you mentioned, Commissioner Duda, when you made some of your statements. What I'd like to do, which may not be very popular, is I'd like, I have a lot of confidence in the KEYWIT organization as a great international company, and HDR also is an excellent company. My thought is, I'd like to see us take this $10 million and figure out how they can work with us to reduce that number and get that number to 7 million, because I had heard a few weeks ago, so just last week, that we were at about a $5 million overrun with some of the changes necessary because of COVID. And I'd like to make the motion that there be an amendment, this resolution allocating $7 million to this, and let them work at it as they're working on firm numbers for the Hall of Justice project. And that's what I'll close with.
Thank you, PJ. Further comments? Commissioner Boyle.
One, I want to mention that quite a while ago, I think it was probably in December of God knows what year, I think it must have been two years ago, it was off early. I was with Bruce Carpenter and another fellow from HDR, and Commissioner Kraft was there, and Commissioner Duda was there, and me. And I started talking about things because all these suggestions just drop out of the air. I mean, some of these things are the first time I've heard about them today. I mean, this is the way it is, and it shouldn't be this way. I asked them, I said, "Be sure when you build the county attorney," I didn't mention the public defender, "but I said, "Be sure when you build those offices that they have a stairway between the floors so that they can come and go and talk to each other without having to go out and take an elevator down or something." That was two years ago at least, a year and a half ago, two years. It was at that same meeting that they kind of, one of them casually said that they had reduced the size of the gymnasium. And after I got up off the floor, I said, "What are you talking about? That is the only recreation those young people have." So they did something to make it regulation size. But this is the kind of information I've gotten as a commissioner. It's not sufficient. We are like mushrooms. We're kept in the dark, and not intentionally, I don't think, it is not intentional, but I've certainly tried to inform myself. And finally, I got a really good look at the cells that these young people would be kept in, and it's, they're 70 square feet, 70 square feet. And I believe that's the same size we have on 42nd Street, and they're all lined up in a row and all this way. And I said to one of the architects from HDR, "Where are the young people going to eat?" And he said, "In their rooms." Now, come on. I'm saying, I have never had enough information. We never told the public well enough. The first public meeting I remember was at UNO, and it was the architect showing the finished product. I went out to the north side and listened, tried to listen to some black families that have children there and so forth, and it was absolutely awful. I don't feel we ever involve the public or the people who come to these meetings. There aren't that many here today, but I affectionately referred to it as the people with torches and pitchforks affectionately gave that, because you're the people who tell us, I think, you tell us what needs to do. And I think, you know, Sharon was here earlier. I don't see her, but she was really, there she is. Hi. Sharon, you were terrific. And my bottom line is, we have an obligation to care for the people first. And PJ, I appreciate your suggestion at 7 million, but I would also vote yes for that, and then I'd be able to bring that back as well. I think we need to discuss this fully. We don't, I don't have a clue about what's really being proposed except the dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I appreciate Commissioner Boyle's parliamentary vote to be on the prevailing side, to ask for reconsideration in January of this entire sad raid on the CARES COVID- for reconsideration in January of this entire sad raid on the CARES COVID relief funds.
Off topic.
The documentation, such as it is, that we have for this $10 million grab that's had no hearings, is exactly three pages, no budget, not a single word of what the $10 million is for, and there have been no hearings on this. As Commissioner Boyle pointed out, and as Commissioner Duda studiously did not, this was concocted behind closed doors. Commissioner Duda and the others are simply following orders, as they have throughout this, to make sure that those making money off of this construction scheme are well taken care of. This isn't about the children. As Commissioner Boyle pointed out, the children are going to be ill-served by this cell block downtown. The children would be better served by the campus and the field club neighborhood that we already own, and we will revisit that in January as well. Because as we heard here today, the original study commissioned, the CHIN study, thank you for pointing that out, recommended the best practices is a campus setting that looks like a junior high school, other than a cell block that looks like the correction center. As a matter of fact, is near the correction center. So we'll come back to this, but don't be confused. This is a raid on the COVID CARE relief funds to pay
Off topic.
... cost overruns in a construction scheme to build a kids' jail, among other things. There are contingency funds built in to the contract if they wanted to use them to pay for things that they apparently didn't anticipate, like furniture. I can't believe that. Although, there's no budget written down, they've thrown these things around. We want to do furniture, we want to do drinking fountains, and things that you would anticipate would have been right on the agenda from day one. But be that as it may, there's, HDR's budget contains a 5% owner contingency, which is almost $6 million, and we haven't had any discussion about that either. There's been no discussion at all. It's like directly to the pay window, as the lame ducks are walking out the door. This is their last chance to grab some money to throw at this unnecessary project. We can do this better, cheaper, and smarter, and in 2021, we'll revisit this, and we will. So thank you, Commissioner Boyle. We look forward to you raising that on the first meeting of the new board elected by the people in November, where we hopefully can hear some real public discussion about how we spend your money. That's not happening here today. This is simply a rush to pay off some people who are building an unnecessary project by people who have been turned out by the voters and aren't going to have any say anymore.
Give me warm fuzzies. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make one point to clarify, I just want, I just want to make a point to clarify what was said. You know, I respect Commissioner Boyle's comments, but I want to speak particularly to the point that there was a meeting in North Omaha, and it was awful. That is, that is incorrect. I was there. There was not a meeting in North Omaha that was awful. I went to all of those meetings. I spoke at all of those meetings. There were a total of, from ranging from 22 to 25 people at those meetings. 16 of those people at all of those meetings were roughly on the county's payroll, other than the one at UNO, when there were about 60 people, 30 of them from Mark Fox Hall's criminal justice class, and about 20 of them county-associated people. That was the number that was there. So, and I'm speaking with some authority from somebody that believes in this project and don't, and does not understand that there may be some complaints about this. But I'm speaking from, from a point of view of somebody that just ran and full-throatedly believed in it, and asked the people that voted for me to trust my judgment on that. So I just wanted to note, the meeting in North Omaha was not awful at all. Also, I want to note, I just want to talk to this point of the, the point of, you know, the talking point of a kids' jail. Just note, the facility that we're building is different in tone, is one-third the reduction size. There was discussion about 48, and now it is 64. That was the compromise. And that in no means is a, to use that derogatory term of baby jail. The one that you're in now, the one that we're in now, is developed in a time when we didn't know what was best, in regards to environments and things of that sort. So I just wanted to put those two things on record and say with some authority that the meeting out there was not awful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claire? I might like to say something again if I could.
All right.
When you talk about 42nd, and Chris kind of reminded me of it, and I attended all those meetings that Chris discussed, meetings, town meetings in South Omaha, North Omaha, and so on. But when you talk about 42nd being a campus, first of all, the only way that the young people that are in the youth center could see the golf courses there is if they probably had a ladder in the room that you're in.
Correct.
Secondly, they are not allowed to go outside. You drive up to the facility, you'll see the razor wire, and I've talked to the parents, Mark Kraft and I attended some of the meetings with the parents a year, in the last couple of years, and it's a pretty sad situation there. It needs much work and renovation or whatever, but more importantly, when someone calls it a campus, it isn't any campus for the young people to be driven up to and then put in a building to never be outside, period. It's pretty poor.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I just wanted to, I don't know, I guess, correct what Commissioner Rogers said. The meeting that I attended, I was the only, the only commissioner there, and it was, I believe it was Willie Hamilton who called it. Well, listen, I was there, Chris, I'm telling you, I don't know what you're thinking, but I was there, and there were about 20 to 25 people, you know, it was a small group, and I remember, I remember it real well, and Willie will too, I'm sure it was Willie Hamilton, because I went to say, I believe he was involved with the 100 Black Men, and I somehow got that screwed up and called it the Man 100 Black or something. I screwed up the title of it, and I got laughed at pretty soundly, I deserved it. But it was a group of people, and I shouldn't have said it was awful. What it was is they were angry. They were very angry because they had children, grandchildren, and so forth, and they cared about who was there, and I tried to tell them I did too, but they didn't believe me. And so, you know, with all due respect, I was there, and I was the only one there, and I was one of two white people. There was a fellow there that was, I guess, you know, really had some sympathies with the, with the black people, as did I, but anyway, it was a crowd that was really unhappy, and I stayed and tried to do the best I could. I, I have always had a close relationship with North Omaha and the black residents. I got elected because of them, and I never forgot it, and I tried to pay it back when I was mayor, and street repairs, and streetlights, and worked with OPBD, and making things better, and Miller Park, and all the rest of it. So anyway, I can tell you, and I swear, that I was there by myself, and they were angry. And that's all, that's what I was talking about. I don't, I didn't attend any other meetings except the one that was held at UNO when HDR made the presentation on the building. That's the only other one I attended. So I swear to you, that's what it was.
And so, so let me say, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me say, I don't doubt your sincerity or anything toward North Omaha, but I just wanted to correct that on the record and say that, you know, the meeting you're talking about was not a board-sponsored meeting. I know that meeting you were talking about, and that meeting happened at their facility over on 30th and Spray. But to say that that meeting was the, the one surrounding it is not totally, because there is a meeting in January that Ben Gray and I had, and we explained that meeting. And I'm just saying, Mike, I'm just saying, I don't want this to be implied, that that was the only meeting that happened. Okay, but, but it's getting mixed up now, and I'm not, and I'm not, you know, I'm just being clarifying on facts, because opinions are where they are on this, and I've said my piece to explain it to people, and those people that I explain it to that understand it are great, and if people have their opinion on it, I can't change that. But it just needs to be in the record now. It's being displayed, I mean, it's coming off, and I am hearing it, as if that meeting represents the sole meeting that happened. Okay, I know, then that's why I'm clearing it. You had that meeting, and there was a meeting that I had, there were two meetings that Councilman Gray and I went. And I'm just saying to the point, you can pick any meeting out and say that people were upset or not. Those people were at this meeting, and some of them expressed their opinion, but it wasn't a mass uproar of upset. They got, they, they had their views explained to them, and they seemed to be settled. So I just, I don't, I don't want this thing feeding like, you know, because there's, there's been this illusion, and I hope that now people see that the emperor has no clothes. There has been this illusion that there's this mass uproar. Yeah, there's a few people, but I know I've had plenty of people that have come to me and said, I believe in what you're doing, it's the right thing. So if this thing gets played like it's just the other side, I know there's people out there on different ends, but I just don't, you know, it gets fed to that point, and that's what I'm speaking to particularly, that point. So to Commissioner Boyle, I'm not saying you, you know, I got too much respect for your opinion and the work you've done in North. I'm not saying that. But what I am clearing up is that there's this mass uproar about that. There's different views, but there's not a mass uproar. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, listen, I never said it was a mass uproar. I said, I spoke to a group
It's implied.
Well, I, it wasn't, I never, you can take it the way you want it, and if you're calling me a liar, go ahead and do it.
I'm not calling you a liar.
I'm really disappointed, I'm disappointed.
I just respected your work.
Please. I'm disappointed that you would, you would challenge my, after all these years in politics.
I'm not challenging.
When I'm talking, yes, you are. And when I'm talking to a group of people, I can tell when they're unhappy, and they're angry about things. They're talking about their grandkids, and it wasn't, it was all cordial. I had no, I mean, cordial in the sense that nobody touched me, nobody insulted me, nobody did any of that. They expressed opinions about how concerned they were about our children. So you can characterize it any way you want. I never said it was the only meeting, but it's the only one that I attended on the North Side. So we can leave it, I don't care what you think about it, Chris, it doesn't bother me that you think you have total control and you're in charge of what goes on in the North Side. That's not right.
Really?
You don't, you don't, believe me, you don't.
I'd like to get back to the topic at hand, please. We have too much, these discussions
You're right.
These discussions, we've, we've been very hindered by an inability to actually have civil discourse on this board.
Well, it is.
May I please speak?
When I get called a liar.
May I please speak?
When I get called a liar.
You want to just vote?
I know.
Okay, the vote has been called with no public input.
Well, what public input? Oh, okay, fine, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and there's people on Zoom.
Okay! Call them up. Run the meeting for a change.
I'm trying, but you keep interrupting.
I very strongly
What I am trying, may I please have the floor now?
When I get called a liar, I get a little upset.
Let me know when it's my turn.
It's your turn, and behave. Call up the witnesses.
Thank you for telling me what to do.
It's my, I have
Oh, come on, my, the ability for civil discourse has gone away from this board.
It's two-sided.
May I please, please, talk? We used to have civil discourse. This environment has become so toxic that, may I please speak, Mike? Come on, quit interrupting me, for heaven's sake, let me talk! And so have you.
Okay, we'll call up the people.
Good. Who's running this meeting?
I'd like to.
I know you would, and you think you are. The, please, let me talk! Let me talk! Chris, the floor is yours. I can't deal with a commissioner who will not be quiet at the request of the chair. I don't get it. I don't understand why this type of behavior, why we continue to exhibit it. We aren't allowed to have civil discourse on anything, much as we try. It has just become so toxic.
Could you res-
I am trying.
I mean, I think you're here to serve
Claire, what do you want to do? Are you
If this guy will ever be quiet long enough for us to go on with our meeting, we will go on with our meeting. It's up to you, Mike. Are you going to be quiet long enough for us to go on with our meeting? Are you going to be quiet long enough to let us conduct a meeting? You refuse.
No, 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 no. We're fine, Larry, Larry, we're fine. Larry, Larry, we're fine. Larry, we're fine. Are there any, are there any, no, Larry, you're fine. Are there any citizens that want to comment?
I volunteer to leave.
Are there any citizens that want to comment right now? Please, do.
Slight of hand, indeed.
Please do.
All right, first of all, this is a paradigm
Ms. Martin, can you say your name again?
Sharon Martin, 1101 Jackson Street. I've been an educator for almost 50 years, working with youth, and I have worked with the crime bill since 1994, trying to revise much of it governmentally, so I'm well familiar with juvenile justice system. I'm going to go back to where you were, Claire, with how this started. There was a lot of people who agreed. In fact, I don't know of anybody that didn't agree with the need for the courthouse, right? I think we all had agreement on that. And it began as a process that involved a research study. You hired an outside agent to do the CHIN study. That was only, the RFP was only for the courthouse, because the courthouse did not have the capacity to really adjudicate the cases and give fair opportunities to kids who were in trouble and who were being kept really unlawfully in many cases because they couldn't get to the cases. So there was a lot of support for the building. The problem came when there was a last minute, really, addition to the RFP, and that was to include a new idea, an unproven idea, and one that had little support or little buy-in from the public. I have never been to these meetings before, but when I read and heard, and I was not part of any group, I tend to be a conservative Republican, so we've, nothing to do with what party you belong to, it is equity in our system. I want to applaud, first of all, the tenacity of Jim Kavanaugh to stand up to this, because this has been a process that I have not understood from the beginning. I went to the first meetings, and I began to go to all the meetings, and there were upset parents. It was clear that Brad Alexander and the people who ran the current award-winning, I will say, system that we have in place, yes, the facility is bad, but every idea, including those that were researched and brought forward by Jim Kavanaugh, were rejected, didn't want to listen to them, didn't want to have any opposition at all. In fact, the first meeting that I came to, I took notes on a couple of things that were just shocking to me. And that's when I already said about the eight-member council with this much power. Mr. Duda and, and Mr. Kraft particularly, we have the, and it was done in this animated fashion that you have just seen, this overt opposition to any other ideas. We have the authority and power to make this decision. I remember hearing that and thinking, what? It says, we don't need your support or approval. And that was addressed to me and to others in the audience who had real concerns, having read word for word the CHIN study. the Chen study that supported in no way the co-location of the juvenile center with the court. This is where the problem was. It was not with having the court facility that we need and everybody could agree. It was going into an unproven plan that was gonna be the largest expenditure and investment decision in the history of Douglas County. And it was done with very few people engaged or involved. And I don't know how the CARES money got into the public fund and now is only to be addressed as the public fund.
Thank you, ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
But if the money first started with the CARES Act, there was a loophole of some sort that got it from one to the other and it's being addressed as misused funds that where people are hurting.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to comment? Well, no, ma'am, I'm just, I'm just following the rule, it's five minutes. Thank you. Anyone else? Sir, if you'd like to come?
My name is Dave Drizak, I live at thirteen twenty-four South Thirty-Fifth Avenue. And I'd like to speak about the COVID money, which is being moved from the fund.
That's not what's on the agenda.
I'm sorry, sir. I just heard three hours ago that the budget we were talking about, the money that was not spent was then gonna be moved at the end of the year. Yeah.
But, but that is off topic to talk about CARES Act funding when we were talking of, this is an important topic.
This is a very important topic.
It is. And, and these aren't CARES Act funds and so I don't want to confuse anybody with that, with that discussion.
So there's, there is general funds then that.
Thank you.
Ten million dollars that is now in the Douglas County Commissioners Fund. And so I like to talk about, well, you know, that was now intended for the courthouse and the juvenile center as well. So, but a little bit about myself is I've lived in Omaha my entire life. I have a wife, I've got three children. I worked in an IT industry for over thirty years in private companies. So I know a lot about what is going on in the city, so I feel I have a little bit of background on that. I also live next to the current detention center. So with that said, I also like to thank Mr. Duda and Mr. Kraft for their years of service. So I'm not gonna discuss the juvenile center or the, the courthouse money. That's already been approved, that's water under the bridge. What I like to talk about is that general fund money, that ten million dollar money that is not being spent for COVID relief. On the way here, I drove down Lenworth Street and I saw a line of cars. I see this every week, a line of cars of people waiting for food. I've never seen that before. I drive, I used to work downtown and I've never seen that again before. So, um, so what I like to see that ten million dollars that is moved over is used for rent, for aid for people that need food or medical resources. Or nextly, is maybe property relief for the people of Douglas County as well. And I know I'm not presenting myself very well, but at the end of the day, I think that if this goes forward, that the remaining board members who are gonna be coming into twenty twenty-one will have to address to their constituents, their voters, on why this ten million dollars that was moved to the general fund for construction purposes was not spent on people that are hurting right now. Thank you.
Claire, you back on you? Ma'am, I'm gonna ask, uh, anyone else, ma'am? Please.
Louise, you manage thirty-three oh six Burt Street, give me a second. Okay, Mr. Duda, unfortunately, you set up this discussion with a lot of things when you spoke about Mr. Kavanaugh and where this money's com- coming from.
Louise, you should keep on because your time is ticking.
I'm, I'm speaking with to the Poe. Or, are you, are you the Poe now?
Follow my lead.
Okay, so I'm speaking with, to Mr. Duda because he began.
That's fine.
And that was unfortunate. There was, there's only one reason and one reason only why you're not gonna be sitting there next year. And that's because you raised property taxes for your constituents. I have here some numbers from, from your, uh, from your agenda item for this that I wanna show you guys. But first, before I do, I do want to say that when the commissioners go out into the community to hold certain meetings or other community members go out to hold certain meetings regarding this issue, the term "public hearing" is used willy-nilly and that confuses people. So that's, that's another issue that isn't being discussed, but yeah, there's, there's been a lot of meetings in the community that were labeled as "public hearings." And for, for legal purposes, public hearing, as it relates to local government, is very well defined, especially in the Open Meetings Act. This is in your agenda item. It says here that you want, the proposal for ten million dollars is for twenty months of five point nine percent on a hundred and nineteen million dollars, which is about seven million. That's where seven million is coming from. So it's not for construction, it's to, uh, to pay interest on the delay. So it, the, seven million dollars is going for the entire project. That, that's what, i- if it's not, if, if this is not what it is, then it, this is not a very explanatory.
It is going to construction, though. Uh, I mean, some of it's going to interest, but much of it is going to construction. I don't want to.
Well, here, five point nine percent on a hundred and nineteen million is seven million.
That's not interest we're paying, that's talking about the cost of escalation that inflation has had on the project. These are still dollars that are going into the construction of the project, it's just gonna take more dollars.
So in, uh, it's inflation?
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Morgan brings up a good point then, to talk with, to the developers to bring down the cost. And then COVID impacts is three million. So it's, uh, for the COVID design impacts, why aren't you using COVID CARES Act money for, for this expenditure?
Because it's not being built this year.
It could be allocated.
Has to be built this year. These actually would be, that's not a bad question. These actually would qualify if they were indeed being built this year.
Uh, is, is, so those three, that three million is for infrastructure, like the HVAC?
HVAC, larger lobby, larger conference rooms, touchless faucets, antimicrobial surfaces.
Those things have not been built yet, right? Because there's, there's a hole in the ground right now.
From where they were two years ago when we started the, this project. These are the upgrades that are now being recommended to make it a safer building.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please, come up.
Hi, um, my name is Erin Scheider, I'm at four oh five South Sixteenth Street. I first off wanted to say that this is my first meeting and this is quite possibly one of the most professional displays of governance I have ever been witness to, which is really unfortunate because I've watched a lot of federal government proceedings. So to think that somehow a conversation about monetary relief for people being affected by an unprecedented pandemic, unprecedented pandemic that none of be, nobody else living right now has gone through is like, to think that that could be turned into something partisan just kind of blows my mind. This is obviously not to detract from the issue of improving juvenile, improving the state of the juvenile justice system here in Omaha. But it just, sitting here, it's just been incredible to me to hear this conversation, especially this being my first trip in here. So I don't think that, it seems strange that changing the name of a pot of money changes its initial intent of allocation. That seems like a weird loophole that should cause a little bit more concern, in my opinion, especially sitting here in this dystopian world that we're all living in and one of the most effective, affected counties in America as well as in one of the most affected countries in the world. So I guess I just couldn't sit down and not say these things. And I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Kavanaugh for standing up for the members of Douglas County. And I just implore all of you to give a second thought to his point of view because having spoken to many people who live in this area, it's not as unpopular as it seems, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see, I'm gonna let everybody in the, in the place go.
Okay.
Zoom first?
No, you're up, go.
Okay, Bob Perrin, four twenty South Eighteenth Street. First of all, I want to say that I attended many North Omaha meetings, St. Clair United Methodist Church and those at North High School, and I agree with Commissioner Boyle. There was a lot of anger and upsetness with how we're running our systems. And I'd just like to talk to Commissioner Duda because I was never approached by Commissioner Kavanaugh. You owe him an apology and me. I didn't find out the county was interested in my property until I read it in the paper. No one approached me.
Somebody sent us a letter.
Nobody did. It was Chris Burbach from the World Herald who called me, then I read it in the paper. Commissioner Kavanaugh had nothing to do with it. This is totally, that's totally false. So that makes me wonder about a lot of the other things that you're claiming.
Somebody sent us a letter ahead of time. We've received a letter ahead of time telling us that they knew.
Well, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this, Mr. Perrin, keep, Mr. Perrin. No, no, Mr. Perrin.
Well, this, in terms of spending money now at the time, for this particular project, the unexpected costs, they should have been expected. We knew the project was fault, was, was flawed from the time it started. Not only from the time you tried to buy the land, from the time you tried to get the financing, from the time you tried to get public support, almost everything has failed on the project. It's been a fiasco. We didn't follow the consultant's advice and we're still not doing that. We don't even know the cost of the project. So how can we allocate more money for something that we don't even know is gonna cost anything? We can't, we can't spend money for something we don't know what it's gonna cost. This is just a blatant admission that the project's not well thought out. This is another step in not thinking it out, asking for something more, rounding it off to some millions of dollars. And, and there was a bit of a controversy over quantity. Now we're saying maybe a fifth floor? How about let's build it on Forty Second Street where we have the ability to make a campus? We have the ability to make one. We could make a soccer field, we could make a basketball court outside. We can never do that downtown. This is the wrong place. Given the financial scarcity at the time, shouldn't we really be focusing on the people that are in need, in intense need because of the pandemic and not trying to allocate any money, whether it's COs, cor, uh, COVID funding or whether it's general funding? It should go to help the people, like the lines that I passed on Lenworth Street to the food pantry. Every day when I come downtown, I pass a lines. Sometimes they're six blocks long of cars, people asking for money. This is not a good use of funds, no matter where it comes from. We should be helping people, not trying to build a facility.
Anyone else in the, in the, in the chambers?
I would like to speak.
Wait a minute, I see, well, you already had a chance.
Excuse me, I just forgot to say something.
You got thirty seconds.
Okay, I, I did find out today that the Public Defender's Office is getting less space than originally planned. So there's still, uh, details.
Thank you. Yep. That's not true. Karen, if you want to facilitate through, tell me who's there, I'll recognize them all.
William's iPad, he's been waiting.
Okay, William's iPad, you have five minutes, I'll let you know. Please, William's iPad, whoever that is.
This is William King from ninety-five, three seven, Boston radio station here in North Omaha. And I've been listening to the debate, actually, I'm from North Omaha. How many of y'all from North Omaha? I guess none of y'all. So, so ob- obviously, y'all really don't care about North Omaha. Or some, oh, eh, eh, please don't interrupt me.
Go be, your time's going.
Y'all don't care about North Omaha at all. I mean, I mean, people are suffering, churches are giving out food, nonprofits are, 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 don't have money, but they still are giving. And you guys are talking about a jail, a building, for real? Where people are dying, I went to a double funeral, people are dying of COVID, a mother and a son. And you're talking about a building, concrete? Are you guys for real? Why did we elect you guys and ladies? We got people in real estate. Experts in real estate, Mr. Morgan. And if a project's over, you, you don't use other money, uh, uh, they need to do better planning. We got people we hurt in North Omaha and South Omaha. Small businesses need money. The state did a better job than you guys are doing. They at least gave twelve thousand dollars to, to, to small businesses. You guys not doing nothing to, for the kids that, that's suffering, that can't afford Wi-Fi? Thank God for Ricketts, I got some money to build a, a Wi-Fi network on the Indian Reservation. Now we coming to Omaha. I can't get no help from you guys. Terrible. You're terrible. People are dying and you're talking about concrete, a building and putting people in jail. You should be ashamed of yourself. And I got a big mic over here in North Omaha. Oh, yeah, we ain't no chumps over here, so I'm gonna let all y'all know. I'm gonna put all y'all on notice, this is the last time, two thousand, what's the date, the fifteenth? This is the last time that you gonna take funds that's meant for poor people and give it to your rich cronies, give it to your rich friends. This is the last time, sellouts. I hope this is on record. Because, no, this, this is the last time this is gonna happen, without a doubt. And, 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 uh, you can do some trickery, all the money's here, the money's there, you magicians. You fakessters. People are dying and you're, and you guys are arguing about some concrete, putting it, yeah, you putting black people in jail. You put my brothers and sisters in jail, you don't care about us. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna remind you every day, we gonna see who got the bigger mic in this city. I got quarter rolls in my hand because I'm ready to battle. Yeah, you ready to battle? I'm ready to battle. We gonna see who's ready to battle. But we gonna let y'all have it because y'all don't care about us over here. You do not care. And I wanna hear your, your chump language. Words are words, action is action. The state used the money appropriately, and we are blessed to be building because we got Corona dollars. And you chumps are gonna use it to build a jail for my people? Are you serious, Chris Rogers? Are you serious? You better not come over here in North Omaha talking that trash. For real. Hilltop Project, Vietnam Projects, Spiritual Projects, South Side Projects. Y'all don't care about our people? But you didn't expect a kid from North Omaha, mama couldn't read or write? Oh no, you weren't expecting that. A brother from, from Hilltop Projects to own a radio station. Now, you can't, you can't censor me, clowns. You can't censor me. And I guarantee you caught me off in five minutes. You guys don't care about North Omaha. I'm going for a probation lawsuit, so I know what I'm talking about. Mr. Uh, 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 uh.
Okay, Bill. Thank you for your comment.
I wanna hear that.
Karen, who's next?
Michael O'Hara, you're next.
Mister, uh, please, next. Thanks, Bill. Mr. O'Hara.
Hello. This is Michael O'Hara. I'm resident of Omaha, 1518 South 198th Street. I was very optimistic earlier in the meeting when the congratulations were extended quite appropriately to our two retiring commissioners. I was sad to see it devolve after that. But I had several comments. I'll revise them. One is that the cost increases. The county did not make a motion to dismiss it forward, and the city or the county's bond council was against issuing bonds because it was not frivolous. And it was asking the county to limit it. A statute says you're going to build a courthouse and use bonds, you need to vote of the people, and a general statute saying you need to vote of the people. Another aspect is that it's been said that the delay caused the increase in cost. I'm an economist as well as a lawyer, and when you expect something to go up, but it goes up slower than you're expecting, that's not an increase. That's a decrease. And the interest rates went down during the period of the lawsuit. So the lawsuit actually reduced the cost of this operation. And similarly, COVID has caused construction costs to decrease. They've increased substantially for homes, for the wood to build homes, but not for the steel that goes into this type of structure, not the type of labor. And so the costs have actually gone down. And I'll end with a comment that whether or not it's CARES Act dollars or not is a legal question, and that'll be up to the General Accounting Office, as the governor of Iowa is discovering with her own internal auditor. So I would ask that you get a letter from Deloitte saying that Deloitte thinks this is such a smooth transaction that Deloitte will reimburse you if it doesn't get approval from the feds. And if Deloitte won't do that, then I would ask Commissioner Duda and Commissioner Kraft as champions of this to issue personal guarantees that the money will be refunded if that's what the feds demand. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And I would like to thank our retiring commissioners for their service. I've known them a long time. And the passion you're seeing is how committed they are to working on this project. They're human. Give them a break. Wow. Thank you.
Next, the gentleman at the top, PRMC, D845.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's my email, but this is Judge Patrick McDermott. I'm a retired county court judge in, in the 5th District. But I represented Mr. Lambfair in the suit against the county, the city, and the building commission. From the discussion, it is clear to me that you did not understand what our goal was in that lawsuit. Because it delayed a project you were interested in, you thought that was the goal. Believe me, if delay was the goal, it wouldn't have been tried yet. Because we would have tied that up in discovery and depositions for months. But that was not our goal. We wanted to ask a simple question. Was this a joint use? Because the legislature and its wisdom did not ever define that term, which is critical to that statute. We asked that question. Judge Coffey said, no. It is a joint use as long as the parties define it as that. We looked at the pros and cons of appealing that. We determined that that would just put in needless delay. We didn't appeal. We notified our counterparts of that fact. Now, I don't know if Ms. Yuric is still there or not, but I do appreciate the incredibly good representation that the city, the building commission, and the county had. We were able to avoid a lot of the usual lawyer bickering, sat down together, came up with a stipulated set of facts, and presented that to the court in what for Douglas County must have been a record, from filing to decision 187 days. Another issue that I think that has not ever been raised that you need to think about, and that is that there's going to be a new administration, there's going to be a new director of the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, from which most federal funding for the care of youth in the several states is issued. Right now, we use a retribution model which heavily relies on isolation of offenders. I expect under the Biden administration that we will see a director who will be more of a model of restorative justice and rehabilitation. You may be building what will be obsolete on the day it opens. So I would just give you that cautionary tale. Otherwise, believe me, gentlemen, this was never personal. I did not confer with Mr. Kavanaugh on what suit we would file. Dave Lambfair and I have known each other for over 50 years. We went to high school together. We decided that seeking a vote of the public on a bond issue of $110 million warranted a lawsuit. And it was that simple. Thank you for allowing me to make these remarks.
Thank you. I, I fear a little bit here that we're going to run out of time. We lose our chamber at 1:30. And I want to bring this to a public vote before then. And we do have other action items still waiting on the agenda for us to get to. I'm starting to see a lot of raised hands going up. And, and we don't have time to give everybody five minutes. I'm going to ask that we go back to three minutes now and see how our time goes. Because we are running short on time in having this chamber. Having said that, and I apologize, but I'm going to ask you to hold your comments to three minutes if possible. Who, who is next?
Nicole and Norma would like to go next.
Okay. Nicole and Norma, as soon as we can figure out how to get you unmuted.
There we go.
There we are.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
I'm gonna talk, and then I'm gonna let my mom talk. So, hello again. It's been a while. I hope you're well. Like everything else in this broken plan, this money is being acquired through magical or wishful thinking. I watched the press conference twice last week, and I watched the magic hand positions of how the money moved from here to there. Poof, it's different money, right? So everything in this plan has been magical, wishful. One day, this will happen, thinking. Your legacy, this is sad. It is basically an office building, but a special office building with plans now for antimicrobial surfaces and touchless operations. At your ridiculous press conference, barely a child was mentioned. Did you notice that? But an additional mysterious fifth floor was. Remember, this smaller building, at least smaller number of rooms for kids in a quite adequate 42nd Street location, is being built because it is basically not needed, as we keep hearing. At least that is what you keep telling us. The number of kids in trouble is expected to go down, you keep telling us. The imaginary programs, the legislature, et cetera. For five years, this number has basically remained the same, the daily number of occupants there. If the number of kids needing services is going down, why are more courtrooms, offices, and a shiny new building needed? Something just does not ring true. Truth cannot exist in your make-believe world. At least HGR's Bruce Carpenter finally called it what it really is, a construction project, as he patted his brow. With that being said, more courtrooms and office space are needed. Who is this really being built for? Watch the press conference. You all make an appearance to tell us. Count how many times the kids are mentioned versus office space, construction costs, and blaming us, the citizens, your bosses, for slowing the construction project down and increasing the cost. How dare we? Please. I'm gonna let my mom talk now. Thank you.
Hello. I just wanted to say very quickly that you have sought input from your public. And I have gone to countless meetings, sometimes two and three a day, and you were not there a lot of the times. And it was really a circumstance that if we showed up, you interpreted that as we were in favor of what you were doing. You did not allow time to always hear from your public. You said that those were public meetings, but they were to tell us how it was gonna be. I'm telling you, the people I saw there had more questions than you had answers. And I observed that for a year and a half at least. Thank you for all that you're trying to do.
Thank you.
The woman on the iPhone, you're next. You unmute your phone? 402-8803? She's trying to unmute, I think.
Sorry.
There you go.
You said iPhone, and I think I show up as a phone number. Maria Fernandez, 1101 Jackson. First off, I would like to thank the outgoing commissioners for their service to the city, to the county. I know being in public office is oftentimes a thankless job, but still, you are appreciated for the time and the service you give. I, I do want to make a few comments. First, I want to commend Sharon Martin on her excellent presentation. I have the exact same thoughts as she does, and I do not want to repeat in the interest, repeat the same thing in the interest of time. I too read the COVID CARES Act, I, I too read the CARES Act several times to be sure what I was going to say was correct, at least from my reading of it. COVID-19 CARES Act money is strictly for COVID-19. The 19 refers to the year in which the pandemic started. And it is not meant to be used for any previous health conditions or any future pandemics or disasters. It is strictly for this one. The building that is being, being built, the Juvenile Justice Center, together with the courthouses and the jail, does not fall under this category by any stretch of imagination because none of it's, none of it relates to the current crisis. So whichever channel you direct the monies towards, from, is not going to matter because it is not being used for COVID-19 when you use it on the Juvenile Justice Center. So that makes it a moot point. The other thing was... Yes, and, and I, I want to let the outgoing justices, commissioners know. We were never opposed to the building of the courthouses. That was never an issue. It's only the location of the Juvenile Justice Center. So with that, I pass it over to the next person in line. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Good, good to see you again. And I will clarify one more time. These aren't CARES Act dollars. I appreciate, I agree, this would be an inappropriate use for CARES Act dollars. Remember, at the end of the day, I sign off on all these expenses, and I'm not going to recommend something inappropriate. This would be inappropriate to use CARES Act dollars for this, and that's why nobody is recommending that. Thank you. I just want to clarify that.
Next is Timothy.
Welcome, Timothy. Oh, once we get you unmuted, we're trying.
There we go. Unmute Timothy.
Oh, no, he's still muted there. Ooh.
Yeah, I think you're good, Timothy.
I muted.
You there, Timothy?
No, not her.
Hey, hello, everyone. So this is kind of like my, we're not really kind of like, I normally don't involve myself in these sort of matters, but I feel a strong sense of urgency and passion. I understand a little bit what's going on, but my main feeling is that...
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you state your last name for us?
Timothy Moore.
Thank you.
So I heard something, I made it in one of the judges that mentioned the outgoing, or the incoming administration was going to have more of a restorative model, and that Nebraska's model is more of a retribution. First, I just want to say I feel like these are youth, and they deserve a chance to be restored. They deserve a chance for rebuilding, for change. So many of them come from backgrounds where their experience, their perception, their perspective, the way they see life is not conducive to really being successful in our, in our society today. We have to give them the tools, the vision, the understanding so that, first of all, they can see themselves differently. And when you can see yourself differently, you can see others differently. And that normally is going to prevent you, or an individual, from harming others. It's very simple. Love your neighbor as you love yourself. So if you don't love yourself, it is very difficult to love others. So these are young people who are barely, have any chance on life and came into situations and circumstances that most of us on this call would not even be able to survive. But many of us have. So I'm just very adamant that we need, as, as, as Omahas, Nebraskas, we owe it to our children to spend our energy, dollars, time, and money to programs that build, and not just talk about it and put it on paper, but actually execute. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your thoughts, Timothy. I, I think we're actually on the same page on, on a lot of this. The restorative thing, I think we're all there. That's first choice for everybody, if there's any way possible. So thank you for, for your comments. Stephen Abraham, is that the last hand I see?
Yes, that's the last one. Yep.
Good afternoon, Mr. Abraham. If we get you unmuted.
Good afternoon, Douglas County Commissioners. Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can. The floor is yours, sir.
All right, thank you. I'm a longtime citizen of Omaha, Nebraska, born and raised here. And I've seen a lot of the things that we discussed today, the disparities, health disparities, mental health disparities that affects the community. I was a dayhouse manager at Sienna Francis House for many years, and I worked directly with the homeless population. During that time, I seen an increasing number of youth that were becoming homeless, whether they're being kicked out or just simply running away because they feel that they're not being treated fairly in their homes. What that leads to is a lot of the criminal mischief. That's the, the biggest amount of individuals that's incarcerated is due to criminal mischief. These are usually crimes that are associated. They're about under $1,000. They could be as, like petty crime. It could be those things like theft. But when I, when I, you know, when I think about the issues that we're talking about when it comes to the, the new Douglas County Corrections Youth Center development process that's going on downtown, these individuals usually do not have anywhere to go. They're usually couch surfing. Couch surfing leads to recidivism. Recidivism is one of the... Recidivism is one of the increasing things that we see when individuals get locked up and they come from incarceration, and they're going back into the same environment that they were in before. Timothy, before me, mentioned about the restorative, restorative process to have the youth see value within themselves. And if they start seeing value within themselves, they start seeing value within the community. And I think that a lot of the things that we see is this simply, it starts in the household. If the household is not empowering the, the young people to, to be successful, and they're falling into the life of crime, that's gonna contribute to a lot of the things that we're seeing. So with this development that's taking place, I think that possibly this could be a doorway to get individuals that are outreach workers, people that come from the community that have similar backgrounds as the youth that have changed their lives. It gives them an opportunity to be contracted services so that they come in and give those, those young people the motivation, the true motivation to change their lives. I know that there's additional money that's being asked for in this. My, my main thing is, is that I hope that it addresses mental health. I hope that it addresses the housing disparities that's going on. And I reside in District Two, so I reside in North Omaha. I was born at Logan Fontanelle Projects. During that time, I seen a lot of things of dual, dual diagnosis of mental health and substance abuse, where people were self-medicating to alleviate the issues that they had. Those underlying conditions usually manifest themselves as criminal mischief in some instances. So I, I'm just hoping that the additional funding is used appropriately, and I hope that it empowers, you know, individuals that have changed their lives, gives them the ability to access some of those funds so that they can help in, within this development. Because so many times, you know, there's individuals that are being served by people that don't look like them, and then they start to lose hope, and maybe that they, you know, being culturally competent. That's another important thing. So, you know, I just wanted to put my, my knowledge aspect into it in regards to the youth, in regards to this development. And I know there's people that's against the development, and I was one of those individuals, because I didn't understand completely if this was gonna be something positive or productive for the community. I've noticed, you know, William King, he mentioned, he's very highly upset. A lot of people in North Omaha are passionate about this, because we look at who's incarcerated. We look at who's affected by this, and...
We need to wrap this up, Mr. Abraham. Please.
Yes, and so to make my point clear is that, please, do what's necessary. Work with individuals that have changed their lives to be the outreach workers or the behavioral health advocates. Maybe work with Metro Community College to, you know, they have a program for outreach workers. Work with them to get individuals the accreditation so that they could come in and be the mentors or the advocates or the navigators for, within this program, because we know that you guys are gonna go ahead and develop this.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham.
Thank you for your time, allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay, we do have now one more speaker. We are going to bring this to a vote soon. I'm gonna ask that we limit this again to three minutes, please. Good afternoon, Kathleen, when you can figure out how to unmute her.
Kathleen Gemrosi, 3105 Dewey Avenue.
Good afternoon.
And thank you for giving me a moment to speak. I've heard a lot of folks weigh in today on not only the, the appropriate use of these funds, but the only comment that I would make is that while we were discussing, while the commissioners were discussing where this $10 million might be going, I am just gonna report from my community amongst restaurant workers who are amongst those that are lined up at Leavenworth and down at Sacred Heart Church and any other place that they can get food. And while we don't know where all those millions of dollars would be spent on the Justice Center, people know exactly how much money they need to not be evicted from their apartments right now. And so while I do also believe that everyone has the community's best interests at heart, or at least I would like to believe that, I think we have an immediate need right now that we should be honest and transparent about how we can use this money to alleviate the immediate suffering that is profound amongst people in North Omaha, South Omaha, and East Omaha. And I just would ask for your consideration that we are, as others have said, in an unprecedented time with suffering in families that are laying awake, wondering how they are going to stay in their apartment. They know how much money they need. You guys can allocate the money for those that are suffering most in our community. And hopefully that we can look at that as a way of alleviating the stress on our justice system, because there are people that turn to desperate things in desperate times. You have the power. I would ask for your assistance in helping the people around us that need it most right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I would like to wrap this up and, and, and bring it to a vote while we still have time. So with that, I am going to call the vote on the motion.
Claire? Claire?
Yeah? Who's calling?
I'm gonna be abstaining. This is PJ Morgan.
Okay.
And the reason I'm going to abstain, you're already supposed to state the reason. We don't have, you know, the firm number of the cost at this time, which I know is coming at the end of the month. And therefore, I'm just not comfortable not knowing what might be down the road as far as further cost. And that's my reason for abstaining.
Thank you. Having received the hard bids as they did last month, I'm comfortable that we're close enough on the figures that I'm comfortable moving forward today.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, how do you vote? Okay. Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstaining virtually. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no. All other commissioners present voting yes.
Thank you.
Duda, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I, I didn't see the hard bids from last month, so if you have...
We didn't get them. They didn't come to us. They, they go to the JCDC.
Okay, but did you get informed about, about them?
I have been, I, all I know is, I was told they've received the hard bids, just as we all were.
Okay, I, I'd just like to see them. I thought you...
I have not seen them.
Okay, then I'll ask, uh...
I don't know that she has. Okay. All right, we did skip over, I intentionally, the Loco Nebraska, I intentionally wanted this to, to hold off until after the discussion on the $10 million because of the confusion between what's CARES Act funds and what's general funds. This project started off as a CARES Act project, and Deloitte and Joe Lorenz said, "Good project would qualify." However, we are running out of time. There isn't time left to make this happen. Oh, it's called Loco Nebraska.
K on page four.
It was one I pulled from consent. What I wanna clarify is, these aren't CARES Act dollars, but the money that's left in our fund that transfers back to the county. Boy. Okay, he already knows everything about it. Go ahead. Call for the vote. Call for the vote. Sure, sure. You could have had a great opportunity to say what you're going on here, but... Well, but apparently I can't, and that's too bad. What I would like to say is, this started off hoping to be a CARES Act program. We're running out of time, but it's such a good program. I wanted to see it move forward anyway. Joe Lorenz and Patrick, in working with them, said, "Look, it's gonna be hard to get this done in time if we call it CARES Act, 'cause the year is almost up." Mike, please let me talk uninterrupted for once, please. Duda, oh, come on, Mike. You know how to push my buttons. You've known it for years. If you just keep talking every time I'm talking, it does get to me, and you've been doing it a lot. I would like an opportunity to give some background on why we are where we are here. We were approached by this Restaurant Consortium about doing holiday meals for the poor. It was just a wonderful idea. Win-win. All good. We were running out of time to do it with CARES Act funding, and so the recommendation from Joe Lorenz and Patrick is let the money roll over at the end of the year and do it with general fund money. We have much more flexibility because we have adequate reimbursable expense. So that's why this was kinda, it started as a CARES Act project, but it's being listed as general fund money right now. So with that, welcome, sir. What you up to?
Thank you very much for, for you guys' time. My name's Clay Seaman, with the Nash, with the Loco... Sorry, this is my first time doing this, and I'm a little nervous here.
And there's my last. We can get together.
Really excited about this. My name's Clay Seaman, S-E-A-M-A-N. I'm with Omaha Loco. We're a third-party delivery service. Super, super excited about this, because we, myself and the, the crew that's part of this Loco third-party delivery service, we are going to provide deliveries to approximately about 7,000 families in the Omaha-Douglas County area that we're working with 40 different local restaurants that we all know and use. And we're gonna have these vouchers that are gonna go out to the people that are in need of, of food by the end of this year. So we're gonna be working with organizations like the Togethers Inc., that I've heard, you know, folks have seen the long lines. We're gonna be giving these vouchers to these folks that they're gonna be able to use at the 40 local restaurants. It's gonna do great for the, the families during the holidays. You know, it's just like presents, we need to feed our family. So these are gonna be meals that are gonna be tailored by these 40 local restaurants that are gonna feed up to four-plus people in each family. So we're talking 7,000 vouchers. We're talking like 28,000-plus people. You know, and it's also gonna help these, these local restaurants that have been hit so hard. It's kind of emotional to me, because there's a lot of people that I'm talking to with these restaurants. And I know them, a lot of them. And this is gonna be a great service for them. It's gonna help the, you know, we're gonna have the deliveries through Loco Omaha, do these deliveries, and we're also gonna work with these restaurants that the staff have been affected, you know, at these restaurants. So we're hoping that they're gonna be, you know, jumped on board and doing some of these deliveries. We're gonna be, it, it's just kind of a first full circle, if, if that makes sense. So I'm super excited, super emotional. It's just great.
It's all good. It's all good.
Is there anything else? Anybody else wants to say?
Our second, Commissioner Morgan is moving, approve him. I'll second it. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Burke Har, 6457 Harding, or Francis Street. I also wanna thank the county attorney's office for their help on this. Honestly, you guys, this is what Christmas is all about. Everyone came together. It was amazing how well it all came together. So thank each and every commissioner for all the work you've done. Commissioner Duda, thank you for all your service on the CARES Act. I don't know how we would've done it without you, so thank you. I wanna thank everybody here, so that's it.
Thank you, Burke. We have a motion and a second before it. Further questions or comments? Then could we please vote? And I apologize for making you guys wait to the end, but hopefully it's worth it.
Absolutely.
PJ Morgan voting yes.
Commissioner Kraft, are you on virtually right now? I can't see. Well, motion passes. Commissioner Kraft is absent. Commissioner Morgan voting yes virtually. All others voting yes in person.
Thank you. Yeah, this, this is so cool. It's, it's winning on both sides. I mean, it's good for the restaurants, it's good for the people. It's just a win-win. I love it. I just love this idea. This is exciting. Okay, I think in all of my skipping around here, I see Eric still hanging around. I hope this is the last item. I'm told Dr. Four had to move on to something else. We aren't gonna be getting the update today. So I would move on to item 5A, report from the county purchasing agent on the emergency purchase of thermal scan thermal camera system made by purchasing on behalf of Corrections.
Yeah, go ahead and down, bottom left corner. It's that one right there. Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect, sounds good. Thank you.
Eric Carlson, Douglas County Purchasing. First of all, I'd like to thank Claire and Mark, who's not here right at the moment, for all of your work with me. I've really appreciated the time I've had since I started in 2011 working with you two, and wish you best of luck on your retirement. And just a quick reminder, this agenda item is just quickly to let you know about an item that we had done between board meetings. We had to buy the body scanners, you know, for the COVID protection at the Corrections. They're basically thermal cameras, and Mike can give you a little more information on them. Basically, these got purchased in between board meetings. Part of the emergency purchasing declaration and the emergency purchasing policy requires that I let you know and give you an update and a report on what's occurred between board meetings. And that's what this is essentially. So real quickly, just this is a reminder of all of the resolutions that have been done leading up to today. And the, obviously declaring the global pandemic occurred back in March, and then we had a, the purchasing declaration where you could waive the purchasing requirements in April. And then, under that local declaration, that's where we're at today. You've approved $4.000,000 for Corrections back on July 28th. So the money here that we're talking about today was already approved, and it was on their presentation to actually purchase these cameras. So Mike came to me and said, "Hey, I need to order these cameras for a cost of $68,000." I reviewed it, and under the process of the emergency purchases, I approved it, signed off on that emergency purchase, and the order was placed on December 1st in the amount of $68,000 to NUC Tech. So this is just basically us tracking the information for Joe and Lisa for CARES Act purchases so that we can make sure we have all the documentation, that we didn't go out to bid. If it's over 50, normally we bid, as you know. And so this is just letting us know that this is how the purchase came about, and this is just the quote that we got from the vendor for $68,000. So I'm just giving this report to you today to let you know that this purchase had occurred, so.
If I had known it was that simple, I'd have put you earlier on the agenda. Next time, next time.
I was like right there, Claire.
And thank you for your time, Mike.
So, and I understand we've got some items that require some action, so unless there's any questions on the...
Okay, okay. Very good, very good. Okay, thank you, Eric. Is there any, I think we got through the whole agenda, I hope. Is there anything else for the good of the cards? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor can signify by leaving. Those opposed can stay. Thank you all for a good meeting and for 28 wonderful years.